And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our first post-election meeting.[31.11][31.11](laughter) Everyone is rested now. We are going to begin with one proclamation. Its title is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and I have on my list that Amy Cantrell is here to receive this proclamation, but Amy, if you have anyone else with you, please bring them all up. Okay, I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is an annual event where people come together across the country to draw attention to the problems of hunger and homelessness; and whereas the advocacy theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2017 is ending the criminalization of homelessness; and whereas hunger and homelessness is a serious problem for many individuals and families in Asheville, and these people need support from the community and nonprofit organizations; and whereas the homeless voice group of beloved Asheville has called our community to a raised awareness of the struggles of people living on the streets and experiencing food insecurity; and whereas Asheville and Buckham County has five to six hundred people at any given time who are homeless, and twenty preventable deaths happen each year in our community due to homelessness-related health causes; and whereas the Food Research Action Center ranks the Asheville metro area as the ninth hungriest city in the nation; and whereas the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Asheville-Buckham Homeless Initiative, the City of Asheville's Food Action Plan, and the strategic goals of the City of Asheville; and whereas through the homeless initiative, many organizations are committed to ending homelessness and to providing supportive services including meals and necessities to people experiencing homelessness and poverty in our community; and whereas there are many different reasons our friends and neighbors in Asheville are hungry or homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for very low-income residents and the presence of food deserts in our community. Now therefore, I, Esther Mannheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim November 11th through 19th, 2017, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in the City of Asheville, and encourage residents to participate in homelessness and hunger awareness activities and take action to end homelessness and food insecurity in our city.[202.37][202.37](applause)
Thank you all for being here and to our council. These are members of our homeless voice community, so Hattie, and June, and Adrian, and Redmoon Song, and Joshua, and Angel, and so they're gonna receive the proclamation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation. I am Joshua Rosen.
Yes, and I'm Angel Stout, and we are a part of Beloved Asheville Homeless Voice. We want to thank Councilman Haynes, Councilwoman Mayfield, and Councilman Bothwell for coming to our homeless voice meeting, and we want to invite other council members to join us for one of our meetings.
We are the face of homelessness in Asheville. We are the people struggling through housing crisis here. We are just some of the people behind the numbers, and there are many of us who could not be here because they had to be in the shelter or had to get to their campsite before dark. We want you to know that we are part of the city, and we care very much about the city, and it is our home too, though we don't have a house.
We want you to know that we are more than a stereotype. We are gifted, and through Beloved Asheville's homeless voice, we are using our gifts for the good of this city. We are making gardens and free farmers markets for elders, increasing voter engagement, and working to be solutions, working to be solutions to some of our tough city problems. In response to death of Janet Jones, a homeless friend who froze to death in her sleeping bag on the river last October, we started the first street-matic team in the country made up of people who are experiencing homelessness.
We are people just like you. We have dreams, we laugh, we cry, and we bleed and die. We are dying on average twenty-five years before our time, and we believe that we can change that. Together, we can make sure that every person has a home, plenty of food to eat, and meaningful ways to live life in this community.
Tonight, that was the only proclamation we had on our agenda. Next is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda, any item to be considered separately?
I don't wanna consider anything separately, but possibly maybe have someone give Item G some information to the public, because we did have this on, we did speak about this some months before.
G, a firefighter. I don't know if we've got anyone here on staff that can speak to this.
Peggy Rowe, the HR Director, is coming forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Peggy Rowe, Human Resources Director. This item is really just an update to you. As you might recall, in June, you voted to change the matching contribution for the existing 401K for firefighters to a four, from a four, two percent matching to a four percent. And what this is doing is changing that 401A, which is a deferred tax compensation plan, to a 457B, which allows a little more flexibility in the plan. For example, in the 401A, there was an all-or-nothing kind of contribution, so a firefighter would be required to contribute four percent of their salary, or they wouldn't be eligible for your contribution at all. With the 457, they will be allowed to contribute two percent, three percent, four percent, and get that matching up to the four percent. And in fact, they can contribute more than that, but your limit is the four percent that you voted for in June. So that's really just changing from one plan to a different plan. Does that help?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the consent agenda?
I would add, though, to that, by way of explanation to people who haven't been following that, that for somewhat complicated reasons, the firefighters have not been covered by Social Security. And this is to help bring that into balance, because we do pay the employer's share of Social Security for all the other employees in the city, and this way, we're helping contribute to their retirement funds in a similar fashion.
Okay. If I don't have any other questions, I have a motion. Move to.
Go.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have two presentations and reports tonight. The first is the Neighborhood Advisory Committee update, and I have here that Phil Lenowitz is going to make this update.
Mayor Mannheimer, Vice Mayor Whistler, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
City council members, my name is Philip Lenowitz, and I am the Chair of Asheville's Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. The NAC is one of thirty-eight boards and commissions, or perhaps thirty-three boards and commissions, that we have here in the City of Asheville, and we appreciate this in the context of how city council members have an enormous obligation to keep up with the activities of so many groups. But without the support of a strong council liaison, a committee's work can easily find itself at the bottom of the pile when annual reports are reviewed. You all know about the value of neighborhoods in our city. Neighborhoods are vital. It's the neighborhoods and their people who make the city alive. Neighborhoods are where social ties are made, friendships are formed, and trust, bonds of trust are created. There are nine members of the NAC, five representing the zip codes in Asheville, and four at-large members. So what have we done and what are we doing? We meet monthly, like most boards and commissions. We have presentations from neighborhoods that are looking to have their voices heard. Our members attend events and meetings throughout the city to gather information on what's going on in our neighborhoods. Helping neighborhoods get organized has been a priority for NAC, and these efforts have been quite successful in the past year in South Asheville, thanks to the work of Pat Depp, the NAC Vice Chair. We know that neighborhoods are not a monolith, although almost all want sidewalks. Some have traffic speeding as an issue, and others have traffic so snarled, they can only wish that speeding would be an issue. I don't wanna spend much time on data. There are hundreds of meetings and events that the NAC members attend, and thousands of hours we invest in our city, and we know we're not the only ones. But here's a sample of how we engage with our fellow citizens. You formally appointed members of the NAC to the ADU Task Force, the Sidewalk Subcommittee, the Comp Plan Advisory Committee, and the Multimodal Transportation Commission, but here are just a handful of some of the other things we do in the community. So what do we think are significant events? Plan on a page. As part of the development of the Comp Plan, city staff asked each neighborhood to develop a plan on a page with a template to help do this. The plans included neighborhood strengths and challenges, and most important to the Comp Plan process, their vision for the future. More than thirty neighborhoods participated and developed these short plans, but we found that the city staff running the planning process hadn't read the plans. After talking with Todd O'Clachainy, that changed, and city staff read the plans and learned what the neighborhoods were thinking, what their concerns are, and how each envisions their future. Then we learned that the contractor running the planning process hadn't looked at the neighborhood plans. Again, after conversation with Todd, we were assured that the contractor would review and consider the plans. We're not complaining. We're not complaining. We're pointing out that the diligence of the NAC, especially Elaine Poovie, our former Chair, was required to keep this initiative from becoming a, we'll ask them what they think and then file it in the drawer, exercise. Registration of neighborhoods. In order to communicate with neighborhood leaders, we need to know who they are, and this turned out to be a monumental task for the recently retired city staff member Marcia Stickford, who served as the city's neighborhood coordinator. We have worked to get neighborhoods to register with the city, so we know who the leaders are and who to contact to share important information. This has taken on a more important role, with NAC pushing for the city council's recent decision to require developers to give notice to and meet with neighbors who live near a proposed project. Getting the neighborhood involved early makes a difference. The Festival of Neighborhoods. The festival has served as a purpose of sharing information among neighborhoods and holding workshops to help neighborhood leaders improve their functioning. We have held three over the last five years. The most recent was in November 2016 and included four workshops with support from city staff. The workshops were on preventing crime in your neighborhood, better governance for your neighborhood organization, creating a vision for your neighborhood, and creating a stronger neighborhood using social media. We plan to hold another festival in 2018 and welcome council's help in making it beneficial to neighborhoods and their leaders. Neighborhood Volunteer of the Year was created last year to recognize that improvements in the neighborhoods which create, which equate to improving life in the city are created by volunteers, and recognizing our neighborhood volunteers helps build trust between the neighborhoods and the city. Earlier this year, the mayor presented our first award to Steve Mitchell of Malvern Hills. We look forward to the city continuing to recognize volunteers who make such valuable contributions to the city. Regional Meetings. The committee meets with neighborhoods in each region on a two-year schedule. We hold these meetings in locations convenient to the region. City staff has been most helpful in attending these meetings and sharing information, but most importantly, city staff and your committee get to listen to the neighborhood leaders in each region. We hear about neighborhood successes and issues that need to come before you. Most recently, in September, we met with the neighborhoods in the south region at the Skyland Fire Department, and here's what we heard from those neighborhoods. Traffic, traffic, traffic. Concern about widening Sweeten Creek. Development, they're planning on hiring an attorney to get involved with the Overlook Road project. They're concerned about building up, and especially about building houses that are out of character with existing homes. They offered thanks for action on the sidewalks in the area and noted that some connectivity is still needed. So what's next? With Gordon Smith leaving, and we appreciate all he has done for us, we need an active city council member to replace him. The city's character continues to change, and the need for strong neighborhoods is critical. I mentioned earlier the importance of a strong council liaison for the committee. We need someone who will be as dedicated to neighborhoods as Chris Pelley and Gordon Smith. New Neighborhood Coordinator. Our committee members were very concerned when Marcia Stickford retired as neighborhood coordinator, and the city planned to replace that position with a community engagement program manager. But after talking with Gordon and Dawa Hitch, we were able to develop expectations for the new position of Neighborhood and Community Engagement Manager, and we expect that developing the expectations will be useful for everyone. We're happy to have Brenda Mills in that new position, and we're grateful to Ashley Trainum Carson for serving in that role as interim neighborhood coordinator. We need more diversity. There are no renters on the NAC, and we need the perspective of nearly half the city who live in neighborhoods as renters. We need more participation for people of color, and we recognize we're not the only committee. It could be better if we had more voices in the room. Our committee approached Kimberly Archie, the city's new Equity and Inclusion Manager, and at the same time, she approached us to attend a NAC meeting, which she did in August. We're very happy to hear her ideas and expect to work closely with her. We need strong support for small-area plans. The importance of area plans has caught on with neighborhoods. Just last year, we saw in this room, a city-approved neighborhood plan prevented the building of a self-storage facility on the edge of a neighborhood that, for the most part, didn't want it. We need more city support for plans like the ones that Shiloh and Wecan have, and the NAC representative to the Comp Plan Advisory Committee, Joe Fiacola, has advocated for the city to commit to this. We need feedback from the council. With thirty-eight boards and commissions, the city council needs to let us know if what we're doing is relevant. Does it promote the quality of life for the people who live in the city? So these are the things we need, what we ask for. This is the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, most of whom are.
Maybe you should stand up.
And now standing in the back, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks for coming here and sharing this with everybody. I've had the honor of being able to work with Neighborhood Advisory Committee over the last couple of years, and while they just talked some about the plans on a page that they did, I don't know that we have really elevated that accomplishment to the place that it deserves. There were zero plans on a page when the Neighborhood Advisory Committee started doing this, and was thirty-eight, is thirty-eight the number we're at, or did it get past that?
Thirty-three, thirty-four? Thirty-three?
Oh, it's thirty-three, okay. Which exceeded the expectations of even the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, as far as how much might get done. But that is thirty-three groups of neighbors coming together to determine their own futures and to choose to participate in a public process, and as everybody up here knows, and most of the people in the audience, these public processes take a lot of patience and determination and willingness to be in it for the long haul. So I appreciate the dedication of what you're doing, and when Phil comes up here today and asks for feedback and asks, "Are we relevant?", they are really looking for that feedback and direction from council, because what you've got on that commission is a bunch of workers. These are folks who are out there getting it done, and they really want to be able to serve council and serve the community as best as possible, so that's why they're here tonight.
Gordon, I wanna piggyback on that. Thank you for being such a strong council liaison for the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. But I'd also like to ask, you made a good point about plans on a page and how they've been really effective in being the voice of communities as things come to council, and I'm curious to know, how much do, how much emphasis does staff look at a community's plan on a page when considering recommendations toward council for any sort of development or changes in a community?
Let's have the planning director address that.
I can answer that. Good evening, Todd O'Clachainy, Planning and Urban Design. So the plans on a page, the way we've incorporated it into the draft comprehensive plan, we have a section in the plan in the implementation chapter where we've summarized all the plans on a page by sort of geographic region in the city. So we have sort of north, south, east, west, central Asheville, where we summarized the goals, the issues, and opportunities within those areas. But to answer your question of how we're using it maybe for development review, for example, is we're not using it today because the Comp Plan hasn't been adopted yet. I think once the Comp Plan is adopted early next year, we can then begin to use the Comp Plan as a tool for development review, including all those plans on a pages which are summarized in that document.
Yeah, I think it would be very beneficial to see what the, you know, how these recommendations come to council, based off of, you know, what the communities already say they want to happen in their areas. So hopefully, in the future, when everything goes through the Comp Plan, we can start to see what the community's voice is for their plans on a page, and how it correlates with whatever development is happening. Even if we don't get people coming out from those communities to voice for or against a certain development or whatever's going on, we definitely can look at their plans on the page to see what their collective voice was when they, when they wrote it. I think that would be beneficial.
Those are very helpful comments and reinforcing comments. As you know, where there have been formerly adopted neighborhood plans, Shiloh, for example, that as those development projects have come forward to the council, those have been very, very obvious in influence in the recommendations. And in fact, you had some, some of that Shiloh analysis and the planning staff analysis led recommendations and very challenged, challenged development proposals before this body. What I mean is, staff stood with the neighborhood association in the plan that came out of their efforts and pointed that out to council and did not recommend approval of a development project that was on Hendersonville Road. Very controversial, but it was on the basis of that plan that you got, saw the staff recommendation come forward.
Any other? We appreciate you all coming down here tonight for this presentation. Thank you very much. We have one other presentation tonight, and that is gonna be handled by the Vice Mayor. That is the Blue Ribbon Committee on the Human Relations Commission update. Maybe remind us, what is the Blue Ribbon Committee?
Thank you. Council established the Blue Ribbon Committee to form a mission and a vision around a potential Human Relations Commission, and council asked them to start meeting this summer and gave them a very aggressive, some aggressive deadlines, and they've been work, they've been meeting every two weeks, and then having a lot of subcommittee meetings in between those, so they've been working really hard. They just gave the Boards and Commissions Committee a brief update, and so I'm just gonna hit a couple highlights and then ask council to consider something. So they have developed a mission statement, and I'm gonna just go ahead and read that. "The Human Relations Commission strives to improve human relations with priority on racial equity in Asheville by partnering with communities and agencies in an effort to better promote and ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Human Relation Commission works to identify and address all forms of individual, institutional, and community-level discrimination through education, advocacy, and policy recommendations." And then they've identified some focus areas, and so basically making policy recommendations to city council to enhance equity, to support the efforts of the Equity Manager, to provide a public forum for the community to voice complaints, to engage the community around funded programs and policies, promote equity in public safety, promote equity in educational opportunities, promote equity in economic development efforts, human, health and human services, and housing. And they've preliminarily started working through an idea of membership and what, what that would entail. So they've done a lot of work, and they have laid out a timeline to actually come back with a finalized mission and vision and duties to council for the Human Relations Commission, and they've asked for an extended deadline to January 31st. And in between, between now and January 31st, they're proposing at least five meetings, including two with, for significant public input. So I would ask city council to allow for that extension of their deadline so that, so they can continue this great work. I think what's really important is that the members of that commission, the Blue Ribbon Committee, as well as the public, be very confident in the work that's being done, and so we knew we were pushing them, but, and they've stepped up, but I, I'm very comfortable with extending this deadline, January 31st. They seem like they had a good work plan put together.
Gwen, I'm, I'm gonna jump in here for a second. I first off, I wanna thank every member of the Blue Ribbon Commission that, that took the time to meet and meet outside their schedule in smaller groups to kind of discuss some of these things, and everybody on that Blue Ribbon Commission or committee have jobs and lives, and it's been very trying for them, and so I'm, I'm really enthused about what they've brought forth to us today. I'm inclined to, to ask for the extension as well. Also, the information that they presented to us today and Boards and Commissions, I would be inclined to ask that, since they want two robust input sessions from the public to allow the public to go ahead and see what they've presented to us, if they haven't been attending meetings, and possibly put that on Open City Hall, if that's possible, not necessarily sure, but if we could do that, that would be good for people to start getting a look at what they're already talking about doing, and maybe offering some comment on that. And other than that, just wanna, again, we did give them a tight deadline, and I think they, they have got a lot of work done so far, but they've got a little bit more to do, and grant them that, that extension.
And the other thing, you just reminded me when you were talking about that, Keith, is they would, the Blue Ribbon Committee would like to sit with the city, the city manager and the Equity Manager and kind of go a little more in-depth as to how, the mechanics of how some of the, this work would be done. So this is kind of the formal ask, that you sit down with, the city manager and Kim really, sit down with them and, you know, we just get a little more detail around process.
Be happy to do that, and I'll look to your leadership to set that up, but Kimberly and I'll be ready to meet with you and the Chair, Vice Chair, however you wanna do that.
Great.
I'd like to move to approve the revised timeline for the Blue Ribbon Committee. Second.
Graham, we have a motion and a second. This is, yeah, it was kind of an odd one in the presentation. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have anyone here who's a member of the Blue Ribbon Task Force? Yes, all right. Thank you for your service so far and your continued service. And please relay our thanks to the committee when you see them next.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our presentations and reports. This is a good time, if you don't want to stay for the public hearings, to make your exit. But you can stay for the public hearings if you want to. So we're going to begin the public hearings agenda. The first item is a public hearing to consider the conditional zoning of 12 Miami Circle from Institutional District to Community Business Two District/conditional zoning for the use of a drive-up window associated with a restaurant. And Mr. Hazard, wait, do we know you, Mr. Hazard?
You do not. This is my first time before council. My name is Dave Hazard, and I'm the relatively new urban designer in the Planning and Urban Design Department.
And you have to tell us where you most recently came from.
I recently was a senior city planner for the city of Hendersonville, and prior to that, for approximately 11 years, I'm a licensed landscape architect and practiced in the private sector in Hendersonville area and this region.
Well, welcome. And you do know that your name is way too easy to pronounce, right?
I'll try not to live up there.
You've got to fix that.
So what we have before you tonight is a request for conditional rezoning for an existing restaurant, Pizza Hut, to allow for a drive-through. Currently, this parcel is owned Institutional, Institutional Zoning District that allows for restaurants, but it does not allow for drive-throughs. So the applicant has requested to be rezoned to Community Business Two, CZ. As you can see in the aerial map, the parcel is in red there. It is adjacent to Long Shoals Road. It is off Miami Circle. To the south of the parcel is a slim parcel of land, zoned RS2. To the east is two single-family residential parcels, owned Institutional. To the north of that parcel is White Duck Taco, is also zoned Institutional. And then to the west, you have, you can see a little bit of Lake Julian. It's a vacant parcel. And then even further west is you get into T.C. Robertson High School and the elementary school and intermediate school that's also This is the proposed site plan. What the applicant is looking to do is remove four existing parking spaces to the north of the site to add a drive-through lane to this, this existing Pizza Hut. One thing to note, that this will be a pickup window only, so it'll be for online ordering and phone ordering. There will be no outside ordering board or outside amplification. And the ordering will be limited to hours, the hours of operation for the pickup window will be 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. and Friday to Saturday. And that, that is in part of the B1 conditions. The site was previously approved as a Level One, so as far as landscaping goes, open space, access, parking spaces, that all is existing and does meet our UDO. Even with the reduction of those four spaces, we are within the allowance for parking as part of our UDO requirements. This parcel, this project has went through already the neighborhood meeting that is required. It was approved with conditions by the TRC, and it was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if it moves on from here, it will have a final TRC review. So the compatibility analysis, this project is located on the Long Shoals Corridor. Recent, not recently, about 2008, Long Shoals Road was wide until four lanes. So it's been going through a transition of uses. It was historically predominantly low-density, single-family residential. However, it is now becoming a mix of highway business, higher-density residential, medical facilities and schools. Long Shoals Corridor has a number of existing auto-oriented businesses. However, there is a sidewalk along Long Shoals Road, schools, a bus stop in the vicinity of the parcel. Further, the city's draft comprehensive plan identifies the Long Shoals Road corridor as a transit-supportive corridor, where multimodal transportation options should be considered. Thus, city staff has requested a safe pedestrian route from the existing sidewalk that is along Miami Circle to the existing Pizza Hut, and staff has also requested a bus shelter at the adjacent bus pad to mitigate some of the automobile-oriented nature of the drive-through. Planning and zoning supported the request for the safe pedestrian route, however, they did not support the request to add the bus stop. So with that, staff, for the following reasons, would recommend approval for this project. That this is an existing restaurant with a proposed drive-through, and it's similar to other auto-oriented businesses within the Long Shoals Corridor. The drive-through will be for on loan, online and phone pickup orders only. And the applicant has agreed to provide the safe pedestrian route to Miami Circle, and you can see that on the map in the red area. And here, the applicant has agreed to provide that safe pedestrian corridor. And planning and zoning, again, also approved this unanimously. So with that, staff supports this recommendation.
Anybody have any questions about the Pizza Hut drive-through?
I just have a couple of questions about, if maybe you can pull up a, a bigger area map. I wanted to ask about where this was in relation to the residential development that was approved recently, and then the memo referenced another, I think, commercial development that had a Bojangles. So if you can just show us where those are.
Sure. Unfortunately, I don't have a larger aerial map, but the residential project that you're talking about is this parcel right here.
Okay.
And that was approved for, I believe, 209 multifamily units. And then there's a highway-mixed-use commercial building that's a little further west of this site, down Long Shoals, closer to I-26, that is under construction right now, that has a Bojangles, and then it's a...
So that's on the other side of the schools?
That's correct. And it's on, also on the southern side of Long Shoals. So it's across Long Shoals from this parcel.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Does the applicant want to speak on this, or we're good?
On the applicant, if I can speak to your questions.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have questions, comments or a motion? Something. Got to have something here.
I move to approve the, let me get back to the language here. Conditional zoning of 12 Miami Circle from Institutional District to Community Business Two District/conditional zoning for use of a drive-up window associated with a restaurant. I find it to be in concordance with our, our planning for that area and think that it meets all the requirements we expect of a new development.
And?
Second.
Second. Okay. Brian, second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Sorry. There you go. Okay. Thank you. The next item is a public hearing to consider conditional zoning. Oh, by the way, Mr. Hazard, thank you very much. Your first time before city council. Pizza drive-through, very exciting. Okay. A public hearing to consider conditional zoning of property located at 175 Lyman Street from River District to mixed-use expansion district/conditional zoning for the development of 133 residential units, commercial space, restaurant in five, and restaurant in five buildings and a parking structure. That's worded kind of funny. The restaurant is not in five buildings, but we will hear more about the project from Sasha, who is here to speak to us about this.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I'm Sasha Vertinsky. I'm a planner with the Planning and Urban Design Department, and I am here to talk about this project at 175 Lyman Street. This site is in the heart of the River Arts District. It's currently zoned river, and it is right in the middle of our RAD-TIP program of work. It is across, just to orient you, it's kind of where that Lyman Street bends down and across from the old 12 Bones Restaurant. It is the former home of the J.R. Stone Sales, and here on the north side of the project is the Carolina Coal and Ice Building, which is a building that dates back to 1912. And it has received a variance from the Board of Adjustment to occupy the ground floor, which it needs since it's in the floodplain. But since it's a historic structure, they receive that variance. This site, before we move on, this site is 2.88 acres, and the proposal is for 133 units in four residential buildings. I think this is the clearest view. So on the north side here, we have the existing Carolina Coal and Ice Building, and there are four independent structures that house those residential units, and in between those buildings is a parking deck. Because this is in the 100-year floodplain, no ground level can be, except for the historic building, can be occupied. So they're making use of that with parking. There'll be a total of 247 parking spaces in the development. The total height of the units, I guess this is a different view of the parking deck. There's two ways into this, with a vehicle, there's two ways into this project. Here on the north side, there's a ramp that comes up to the upper level of parking, and here on the west side, that, that entrance goes into the lower level of parking, if that makes sense. So there's not a ramp connecting those two levels, but they're making use of the topography And I guess I will just note that the sidewalks are shown as they were designed for the RAD-TIP project. The applicant did work with the River Design Review Committee around the design of the buildings and the public spaces. There's a kind of a more major pedestrian entrance here that kind of leads to a courtyard. These two buildings have pedestrian entrances on the street, and this building, I believe it's Building Two, does not because of the topography. Here, the height of these, these buildings is about 70 feet, and the height limit in the, in the district is 80 feet. And what I should have said at the very beginning is, you all, the city council made some changes to the UDO in February, as you remember, and so for 100 units and over, it triggers a conditional zoning, excuse me, 100,000 mixed-use or over 50 units, sorry, triggers conditional zoning, and this is coming under the Mixed Use Expansion Conditional Zoning District. Which height limit has in that district is 80 feet. So this is under that height limit. And this is a color rendering. This was not in your packet, but we did, wanted to make sure you saw this as well. Stop there. As far as the design standards in that mixed-use expansion district, this, this project is meeting most of those design standards. In the condition list, we do have a condition around materials, making sure 70% of the facades are brick or stone or some, you know, good materials. Staff looked at this project and determined that it is compatible. This is actually the, the right kind of project for this area we need. With the massive amount of investment that they're putting into this district, residents are always a great thing to have eyes on streets and parks. Our comprehensive plan also supports infill development, especially where infrastructure's already present, and it aligns with the Woma Dykman Riverway Plan. Just to, these are in your packet, but just to quickly make sure I talk about these. In the list of conditions, the general project is outlined. It also outlines that there are 85 parking spaces on the ground level will be available for public parking. And the developer has offered $50,000 towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Landscaping will comply. There's extra, there's more than required bike racks, and, I'm trying to think if there's anything else important. And as I said earlier, you know, the facades that are visible from public rights of way will be at least 70% brick, stone, masonry, or, you know, exclusive of roofs and windows. So we're trying to make that measurable, so we know whether or not the developer has reached that. So I should mention also, in terms of review process, this was at the area, Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, which voted in favor of this project. It was also at Planning and Zoning Commission, which voted three to two in favor of this project. There was some concern over affordable housing. In the mixed-use expansion, in the mixed-use expansion district conditional zone, it says that the density allowed is 35 units per acre. This project is asking for 46 units per acre, and so in that zoning district, it asks for affordable units to get that additional density. You can actually double your density. So this is not doubling the density to 70 units per acre. It is, I'll let the developer talk about the costs of developing in the floodplain, but planning and zoning did recommend in favor of this project. And that concludes my report.
Does anyone have any questions for Sasha? Okay, we're ready to hear from the developer.
I didn't see the Art Studios.
Good evening. I'm David LaFavre with Alt Invest Partners, the development entity for this proposed project. I'm going to try to be brief. About five years ago, we identified the land in the district for what we envisioned as our first development in Asheville. That land is the Mallett property on Lyman Street that you've just seen. The family that own the land is here, represented here tonight by Hunt Mallett, who is with us here. And we have been working with them ever since five years ago, about four and a half years ago. And about two years ago, a little over two years ago, we finalized the land arrangement, and we've been working closely with the family ever since on this project. About a year and a half ago, we had finally developed full site plans, floor plans, elevation, civil engineering. Our architect is FNF Architecture, Miles Alexander is in the audience, principal. Emily McMakin is our project architect, is with us. And our civil engineer is Michael Goforth, Michael with High Country Engineering. Our goals, and our stated goals and the goals we've really, been really determined to achieve on this project was to do three key things. One is to meet all city existing guidelines and recommendations. Initially was there and what was there when we finished our plans. Second guideline we had was to ensure a fit with the old industrial character of the River Arts District and the surrounding neighborhood. And the third key thing was to preserve the 110-plus-year-old Carolina Coal and Ice Building. We made the developers fatal mistake of falling in love with the building, which we initially thought we were probably going to tear it in. So we'll pay for that eventually. During this process, we worked closely with city's, city staff and sought their input, and they gave it regularly. Likewise, we also wanted input from our individual neighbors and district stakeholders, as well as others with serious concerns for the matters relating to riverfront development. We were fortunate to be given that generous input and support, along with a lot of River Arts history, district history. After making participants' suggested modifications, we were then set to apply for the final TRC in late September, early October of last year. But we had to pause that time schedule to resolve a technical RAD-TIP issue that would have prevented the building. have prevented the building of the project, which this, we got assurances so that we could apply for the final TRC in March. Tonight, we ask for your approval of the project, as submitted by city staff. I don't think I need to elaborate on that much. I think there's so much detail in this project that we'd be up till tomorrow morning if I did that. But we very much appreciate the time that each of you has given to this project to get in-depth knowledge and considerate. And also the time you've given us to talk to you. We want to thank the city staff for putting up with us for five years. We couldn't have achieved what we wanted without them. And we want to thank our neighbors and district professional groups who are here. And it's been an honor to work with everybody there, and we hope we'll have the opportunity to be good neighbors and work together for years to come. Finally, a nod to the intrepid pioneering early stakeholders. They have our total appreciation, and they've the ones that've done the heavy lifting, really. So that's basically it. We've been at this a long time, so I hope we can resolve something tonight.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, we have some questions.
Yeah, just wondering what the rents are.
Gordon, they're going to, they're tentatively set now because we don't have final costs and we don't have final plans yet because of our engineering stuff that has to get done between now, if approved. It'll take another three months to do that and then price it out again. We have preliminary budget numbers. So the rents are going to range for, we have a limited number of studio apartments, and those would be in the 750, 800 range. I'm just generalizing here, I don't have the specific ones in front of me. One bedrooms will be fairly large, 980 square feet, one bedrooms. They would be in the 1100 plus a month range. And the two bedrooms vary, but the base rent there would be in the 1,300 to 1,400 a month range. Thank you.
Glenn, I had a question about, I think you're also planning to include some artist's studio space in this project, is that right?
Yes, we are. The entire second floor of the Carolina Coal and Ice Building will be artist's studios.
Okay. And how many are you anticipating?
Ten.
Ten, okay.
With a, ten studios with a lobby.
Okay.
So there's a display area outside the studios for those artists in the studio.
And I know in previous conversations about this project, there were, there was discussion about whether you all would be able to commit to make those affordable studio spaces for some period of time under some certain set of conditions. And my understanding is that that is not part of what is in front of us tonight, but I wonder if you could, and I'm sorry that that is not in front of us tonight as a condition, but if you could talk a little bit about the degree to which you are committed to that concept.
We are committed to that. And affordability in terms of artist's studios is going to, there's probably a million different ideas about what affordability is there. These are going to be quite nice. They're going to be wood floors, exposed brick walls on the exterior, floor-to-ceiling dividing walls with very, very high offed space. These are not live work, these are just works, you know, working artist's studios. Each one will have its own individual heating and air conditioning, controlled by the studio itself. There'll be two public bathrooms at each end of the main hallway, fully insulated. Each one will have its own lint sink, artist needs, facilities within the unit. No bathrooms in the units, but they're common bathrooms.
And what do you anticipate the rents for those would?
We anticipate the rents for those to be between 300 and 400. There are a couple larger studios that would be more than that. But they're all basically around 350 square feet average.
350 square feet, and then, so you said between 300 and 400 dollars a month?
Right. That's the anticipated, based on our estimated cost. But we, we hope that the artists will be in the River Arts District forever, as long as we're around. And as long as they're around and there's art, demand for artist's space, there'll be artist's space. Artist's studios. That's a personal command.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay, Glenn, I know you have a question.
So on the ground floor, given that it's in the River Arts District, what other than parking could you have put there?
Well, we are putting, in the bottom floor of this Carolina Coal and Ice Building, we are putting the restaurant without adding to. That was allowable through a variance that we applied for and received because of the historic nature of that building. Restaurant space is, there's very little things in a restaurant that are going to be, do any permanent damage that would be mostly replaceable quickly. The building itself has been through plenty of floods, and it's in great condition.
So, so in the?
But in the.
The building that's already there?
Yes.
On the first floor, or the ground floor will be a restaurant?
Nothing else could be done on the ground level of a residential nature. Other things could be there. It could be a warehouse. It's residential that is the issue from what we're doing. Can't be any residences there.
Right. But you'd have to do something that is consistent with the river zoning. I mean, the fact that it could flood pretty easily.
Right. However, the stairwells all go to the ground level.
Right.
The elevators all go to the ground level.
And just to ask this question, you're, you're basically asking for a 31% increase over the right-by-use for density. As, so.
The right-by-use being the underlying right or the overlay?
Being the 35 units per acre.
Okay, that's in the overlay, yeah.
That's what?
The overlay, the UDO overlay?
Yeah.
Yes. Because the existing zoning on the property allows 70 per acre.
No, only if, only if it has 20% of affordable housing.
Before the, before, you know, we were completely through with our plans and finished and ready to go long before the UDO change was made.
But you hadn't made an application to the city?
Well, we couldn't. We were, we actually were ready with the application, but because of the issue, with some survey issues, we had to delay till that could get resolved. So that's why we, that's why we applied in March instead of last October.
It's a little bit of a dead horse, but we could beat it. But it was our survey.
But it was, I guess it was my understanding.
It's the same question, it's still a conditional zoning, totally up to the discretion of council.
It would have had to be a conditional zoning.
Right, right.
I mean, it wouldn't have been a.
Regardless of course or after the change.
Right. They still would have been required to come in front of council.
Correct.
So.
Okay.
Okay. And normally, in a case like, like this, where you would be required to build sidewalks, what, what would happen, you know, considering that we've got Radtip, the Radtip project coming up? Would, would they be just?
Well, we could, we're not allowed to build those sidewalks because they are Radtip.
But ultimately, you would have had that responsibility as a developer, right?
If we waited two years or a year to do this project, the sidewalks would be there, provided by Radtip.
I think what the vice mayor is saying is that council has a standing policy around developers providing sidewalks on the periphery of their sites as they're building, and that would have applied.
It would not have, from what I understand, it would not have. Because it's a federally funded program, the funds are already committed from.
And, which is, which is a boon for you, to be clear. And that's, that's a, it's a public subsidy of your project.
But the requirement exists for all developers regardless of where they are. This is very circular, we've just talked about this before. This happens to be on a corridor where the city is doing some infrastructure improvements and is going to include sidewalk, bike lanes, and so on and so forth. But regardless, if this project were there or somewhere else, there would be a sidewalk requirement. In this case, it's a fee-in lieu because the sidewalk's already being installed. Right?
Right.
Right?
Well, that's, that's my question.
Okay. The terminology, I'm just sorry.
Well, it's a requirement regardless of whether the, the city happens to be putting in the sidewalk in this case. We could ask the city attorney, you know, what happens if the project's being built in an area where the sidewalk already exists?
Well, with a conditional zoning, I don't think it necessarily, you can ask them for that condition and they can agree to it. I don't think there's a set rule, but generally.
What would the requirement be for an applicant building in an area where there's already sidewalk frontage?
Would they have to, would they have to pay sidewalk fee-in lieu?
No, they would not.
No, they would not.
Okay, so we, so we have an odd situation here because right now there's not a sidewalk there. There is a sidewalk planned, but you're caught in the middle of this. So sidewalk fee would not be required if it already was in place.
But it's not.
But it is not.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Are we ready for that part? Unless you had anyone else with your group, but, okay.
No.
I am opening the public hearing on item B on our public hearing agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this proposed project?
Good evening. My name's Peter Landis, I live downtown. I spoke about this before PNC as well. I don't quite understand the issue here with how they could come forward with this project, which called for affordable housing, and then sometime later come back and say it wasn't economically feasible. I mean, I assume some of the economic work was done in advance. Why that's gone away, I don't quite understand.
I think we could have somebody on staff address that, but go ahead and keep, you have numerous questions.
Yeah, also, it seems to me that the agreement to provide $50,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, rather than provide permanent affordable housing, seems to be fairly miniscule. I don't know what $50,000 buys as far as affordable housing, but it doesn't seem like it would go too far. And it would seem that it's, it's basically a throwaway. And I think that they're, they should be held in more account. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Casey Campfield, Mayor Van Heimer, council members. As you know, Asheville is experiencing a period of unprecedented growth. Developers are beating down the doors of the permitting offices to fill every available square inch of this town. And right now, all of the leverage is on the side of city government and its citizens. At the same time, Asheville's experiencing an intense housing crisis. Low and middle-income renters are being forced to leave the city in large numbers. So it is surprising and very disappointing to see a proposal for a mixed-use development with 133 residential units, in which exactly zero of those units are designated for affordable housing. And I mean, after hearing this presentation, you know, I say that the vague promises of a developer don't give me much solace on this. Affordable units with a pre-negotiated, with pre-negotiated rents locked in perpetuity of the existence of the building need to be negotiated. If you cannot or will not negotiate better terms for the residents of Asheville, then you're not truly representing them.
Mayor and council people, thank you. My name is Tom Halliday, resident of West Asheville. It is incredibly disappointing to hear of such a large residential project without a clear commitment to long-term rentals or affordable housing for residents. Housing for residents of our city is in crisis, and developers should not stand a benefit without helping the citizens creating a demand in the first place for tourism. And the $50,000 contribution is quite frankly paltry.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Patty Torneau. I'm a longtime resident in the River Arts District and somewhat credited as being one of the co-founders of the River Arts. I speak in support of this project. We see huge public benefit for the district at large, specifically because of the infrastructure projects that the city has chosen to place in the River Arts. With the public parking that will exist on this project, it's one of the deficiencies of the Radtip, in my opinion, as a stakeholder that worked through this process as River District Designer Committee member, ARC member and chair. We really, if you only define the public benefit of residential development by how many affordable units it provides, I think you miss somewhat of the larger picture of our community. We see tremendous benefit in the establishment of 10 new affordable artist's studios in this project. Just to give you a frame of reference, I own Curve Studios. My rents are somewhere between eight and 12 or 13 dollars a square foot. What this project proposes is somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 or 13 dollars a square foot for artist's space. I'm definitely on the low end in the district. Cotton Mill Studios rents for as much as 23 dollars a square foot. So in terms of what they are proposing, they truly are affordable artist's studios. And they are a type of affordable, a type of artist's studio that we don't have very much of, that we would, that we would really be grateful to have, especially in that central aspect of our district. We really also would like to just credit the development team for doing tremendous outreach into our community. They took the time to walk any artist that was interested through the project and explained it to them, and garnered tremendous neighborhood support for this project. We see as the, I see as an artist at Curve Studios, what we lost when Twelve Bones was taken away. My particular artists think that that has been detrimental to our bottom line. And the, I have 10 artists at Curve Studios that support their families through the work that they do. And so we look forward to the synergy that this project will bring to, to the center of the River Arts District. Again, we wholeheartedly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? I like how no one's raising their hand on this one, just getting up, you're all very orderly, but maybe raise your hand just to let me know if you do plan to speak on it.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kim Roney, and I'm going to speak from the perspective of the artist's community. My husband is an artist. And while I am very thankful that we are making space for artists in the River Arts District, which soon may not be that, those spaces are not affordable. Because I know what the folks who are painting and crafting are able to afford, and they were not affordable for the artists who live in Asheville. We need courageous movement on more than $50,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we need to just push a little bit harder for the sidewalks.
Good evening. My name is Hetty Fisher, and I own two properties in the River Arts District. One is directly across the railroad tracks from the proposed project where the Soapy Dog is now. And the other is down Depot Street a little further. It's called Pink Dog Creative. And we have 28 artists at Pink Dog. We have two restaurants, and we have a retail store, all of which would benefit from having more people living in the River Arts District. If I'm not mistaken, I think Cindy Weeks from Mountain Housing told me that there's almost 1,000 affordable units within a mile, is that right, of this proposed project? That's a lot of affordable units. Of course Asheville needs more affordable housing, but we also need housing in general. We need workforce housing, which I believe is what's being proposed here. We also need more affordable artist's studios. And Kim, I'm going to have to let you know that Pink Dog has lots and lots of affordable artist's studios. And because And because they're affordable, they're full all the time. I have a waiting list that's, you know, as long as my arm for people looking for studio space in the River Arts District. So I'm speaking in support of this project. I think it's a good project. I think it's the type of project that we need in the River Arts District. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Dave Campbell, currently the president of the River Arts District Business Association and also have a business in the River Arts District and have for the last 18 years. The Stonewall Project is, as I understand it and the way it's proposed, to me is one of the most exciting projects that I've seen within that district. 18 years, you know, there wasn't a whole lot around, you know, back at that time, but there certainly has been a lot of development, you know, in the meantime. But this, you know, really is one of the, the most exciting projects that I've seen. It's a neighborhood fit. You know, the developers have taken time, as you know, some of the other folks standing before you today had mentioned, they visited with the neighbors, you know, asked us what we wanted to see, how it could fit into the project. They're making a very, very large investment, you know, that's going to help the city as a whole, you know, for years and years to come. Tax increase, there's a lot of property down there which, you know, is yearning for development, you know, increase the, the tax base, you know, for the city. Pretty, pretty good idea. And these fellows are, are willing to, you know, invest in that community and, and make something different, you know, than what, what has been there in the past. Infrastructure improvements, I know that they're working with folks with Riverlink, you know, on some water issues, you know, within that area there. I think that's, that's only good for the city as a whole. You know, we saw, you know, several years ago with the New Belgium investment, you know, quite a big investment on their part to take a Brownfield site and turn it into what that is. There's all kinds of activity, you know, that's happening in the area, and I believe the Stonewall Project will enhance that. And it's, and it's not just for the districts. It's not for just certain folks, you know. By, you know, developing that whole area down there, you know, we're seeing activity. We're seeing other investments come along. You know, the Radtip, you know, project, I believe it's the largest, you know, investment, you know, the city's made for those kind of projects. You know, that too is going to enhance this. And, you know, here's somebody that's, you know, putting their, you know, hat in the ring saying, hey, let's try and make this a better community all the way around. It will help, you know, for many, many reasons. You know, the developers, you know, clearly are neighbors. You know, they, they thought about us, they thought about the community as a whole. Just good, solid folks. And I think, you know, from the business association perspective, we have unanimous support, you know, for this project, and we hope that you all will see in favor of the project as well. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi. I'm Helene Green from Riverview Station, also a property owner in the River Arts District, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I wasn't really prepared to speak about this, but I really am very passionate about this project. I feel it would be a great addition to our community for many of the reasons that other people have already stated. One thing that excites me about the project is the thought of more people living in the district, not just being a place to work and a place to create, but also just a place to live. And not a hotel, which has people coming and going all the time, but this is going to be permanent residences. And I feel that it would just be a real benefit to the community. Again, we've met with the developers as well, and they've been just, they want to become members of the community. It's, it's a very, it was very refreshing to me to meet such engaging people who want to improve our district. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. I am Matt Wallace. I am a River Arts District property owner for 15 years, and I've been involved in the area. I don't have a business down there, but I see a lot of the artists and, and folks that are in the area a lot doing business. And, and one of the main things I hear all the time is parking. There is a lack of parking. Some, some businesses have parking down there, and it's a little bit of a challenge to balance the parking. And one of the aspects, I think, of, of this project is the available public parking. That is going to be needed down there. Realistically, there's not going to be a parking deck built down there for some time to come. It would be great. There are lots of other pedestrian and cycling facilities in the River Arts, but there still is going to have to be parking. And I see that as being one of the big benefits of, of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Council. My name is Carrie Rinn. I'm with the North Carolina Glass Center, also in the River Arts District. As someone who's trying to run a business in the district, a firm believer that high tides float all boats, bringing new business and livelihood and a community that wants to be invested in the area is something we welcome as a benefit to not only the business that we try to run, but all the artists and the other businesses in the area. And for things like this, along with the many other reasons you've heard tonight, we hope you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Do we have any further questions now that we've gotten to this point?
Please, my turn.
Yeah? Did you have a question?
One question I forgot to ask the developer. Are short-term rentals going to be allowed in the apartment?
These apartments will be one-year lease only. There'll be no short-term rentals.
Okay. Okay.
It's not in the conditions.
Is that part of your conditions, or would you be willing to?
No, it's not. They could put it.
Would you be willing to put it into your conditions?
Pardon me?
Would you be willing to put it into your conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see that. But, um, so I love the idea of this from the adaptive reuse of a building. I think that was one of the ideas to maintain the character. And I love the public parking aspect of it, although I do question what else you could have actually put on the first floor in the River Arts District. So I kind of wonder in about how much of that is just because it's in the river. And I support the Radtip and the development and what's going to go on down there, but, but not at the expense of our other values. And we have identified affordable housing as being one, like, one of the highest priorities. And to approve this increased density without affordable housing sort of flies in the face of that value. And one thing I had talked to the developer about beforehand, given the fact that you're not really using the entire 20% density that normally would go with a project like that, I would propose that rather than the 50,000 increase for the affordable housing, it would be something more in the line of 175,000. And how I got to that number was basically the percentage of density that you are using above the right-by-use multiplied by the city's typical subsidy for affordable housing and then the $50,000 for the sidewalk. So that's how I got to the 175,000. But as it stands right now, I can't be supportive of it. But I would ask, even if, even if it passes, that we put the short-term or elimination of short-term rental as a condition.
Well, that condition would probably, and we'd have to have the developer ultimately consent to it, would say something that lodging accommodation use would not be permitted on the property, and it should be limited to residential multifamily or something to that effect.
That's true.
Being told to come up here. So in condition number two, we did have approved uses include residential, studio, retail, restaurant, and office, and parking, no other uses will be allowed.
Okay.
And the intention was that short-term is not allowed.
Okay.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
So do we, we feel like that condition covers it?
We can call it out just to make sure.
Sure. I want to echo a lot of what Vice Mayor said. I really appreciate you guys coming to meet with me and sitting down and walking me through this project. You guys were real gentlemen through the whole thing, and I have a lot of respect for what you're trying to do down there. The, the things that I would take more issue with do have to do with kind of our long-term housing needs in, in the city of Asheville. And we've been asked to represent the people of the city of Asheville, fewer than half of whom would be able to afford to live in the building that we would be offering public subsidy to. So the, the sidewalk is essentially public subsidy. The density bonus is essentially public subsidy. So this will be, this will be everybody, this is everybody's chipping in. Not only that, but it's also an abandonment of a recent policy that we've put together here in an effort to create more affordable housing. And it's also setting a precedent for our River District. My concern is that here we are, and the first two things that we're going to pass for buildings down there are going to be a hotel and a market-rate apartment building. I wonder where we're going with all this. And I wonder if there's going to be room for everyone in Asheville, or if there's only going to be room for that, for those folks who can afford those market rate and afford those hotel rooms. I want you to know that from this side of the table, I would be very much open to adding more height, adding more density, if that would help you guys make the numbers work to get the affordable units in there. Because I think the building is going to be, what you're doing with the adaptive reuse, it's really nice. And it'll look great. And the parking is fantastic. And the studios sound like they'll be helpful. The affordability sounds arguable, but it's, it's hard to know. So that's, that's what I, I want to be able to say is that I think that from this side, we would like to be able to get to the place where we can incorporate mixed income into what y'all are trying to do. And I'm willing to go a long way to do that. That, if, if that isn't a conversation that y'all can have at this point, then I would get behind Vice Mayor Whistler in her request to come in for that $175,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to try to help us make up that gap. And if, if y'all could come through with that tonight, you could earn my support. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So this, this is a very difficult decision for me. So I agree with actually everything that has been said tonight. I agree with all the benefits of the project that everybody has cited, and I agree with all of the, the limitations of the project and the concerns about the lack of, or the, the minimal contribution to addressing our affordable housing crisis, which it, which it does continue to be. I, I also wish, as I said earlier, that there had been, you had been able to get to some agreement on the affordability of the studios. That doesn't seem like that, is that difficult to, not to crack? And I'm, I'm a little puzzled. I was very puzzled when I saw that, that that was not included. So I'm, I'm frustrated by all of that. However, my, my thinking, and I'm particularly concerned about Gordon's point about the precedent that we're setting. And so here, here's what I would say, I think, to anybody else who's thinking about developing in the River Arts District, which is that, I guess in my view, we, this is a, this is a different part of town. You, you have to develop differently here. And so that, that may mean that we need to look at things a little bit differently. I do, I can't remember who, maybe it was Patty, who mentioned the, the public benefit. And I, I do firmly believe that, that addressing the city's needs needs to be a partnership between private development and, and, and public resources and the city. And in this particular part of town, it may be that we need to be thinking about that public benefit a little bit more broadly than we have in the past when it comes to building housing and building apartments. The parking that is being provided here, 85 spaces, the, the figure, the mayor quoted me earlier today was that, you know, it, it costs about $17,000 of parking space to build parking. And we do, we do desperately need public parking in the River Arts District. I'm, I'm going to be voting against something later in the agenda that, that reduces the ability of people, businesses in the River Arts District to have less parking, because I, I think we need less parking per business in the River Arts District. And, and the only way to do that is if there is public parking. So because, because the city doesn't have any plans right now to build public parking, a deck, or God forbid, a surface lot in the River Arts District, we, we need this parking. And, and if you run those numbers, those 85 spaces at $17,000 a space, that's almost one and a half million dollars. And that is not, that would, that is not an insignificant amount for the city to spend were we to do that, either on land we own or land we don't own. So as I'm trying to think more broadly about public benefit and, and partnerships between private developers and the city, in this particular place, on this particular development, this seems like, while it is not the deal that I would absolutely love and can vote for and smile and be really happy about, it is, that is a, that is a deal that, that I think is important for us to, to do today. And I hope, and I'll, I might say this again when we get to that other agenda item, but I, I hope that this public parking being in the River Arts District will allow maybe our planning department to go back to the businesses in the River Arts District and have a different conversation about parking at each individual business. I think that is, continues to be a problem, and I think we need to address it differently with different, with new models of shared parking. And if this allows that conversation to happen, then it is worth it for me. So again, I would say to others who might be thinking about developing in the River Arts District, do not think that, that, that we are stepping, that I, I will just say I, am, am stepping back from the need for private developers to commit with the city to solving our problems. They just, those problems can be different in different places, and the solutions can be different in different places. And here today on this project, which I appreciate for all the reasons that everybody has said, the, the parking is, is, is not a bad deal. Again, I wish all of the other pieces were there, and I would support it, I would support changing the conditions to address some of the things that have been raised. But I also stand ready to support it on the basis of the parking and the Housing Trust Fund contribution that is there.
I want to echo the statements of Councilwoman Mayfield. I think here in the River Arts District, at the last council meeting, I said that future development in the River Arts District is definitely going to be a fine balancing act. And I think people are witnessing that right now, live and in living color. I think also people who want to develop in the River Arts District moving forward need to also know that one vote is not a blanket vote or acquiescence to what may come. Again, this is, this is very interesting times in this area of the city, and we have to make sure that the development of this area will benefit not only the people that come and play here, but the folks that, that live here and have to deal with the everyday task of moving in and out of the city of Asheville and working and, and trying to build families and have homes and things of that nature. So again, one vote isn't a, isn't a blanket act of acquiescence to these things. I think the parking is important. I think some of the different mixtures of development in the River Arts District is going to be important to its viability moving forward for the future, not just today, but for the next 20 or 30 years or so. And, and the moves that we make here now are going to be crucial to that, and that we need to take, take heed of what we do. This won't be the last development that comes up in the River Arts District, but I think developers definitely need to understand that. When it comes to putting forth good projects, they, they do have to have a good mix, and not all the time that the projects that come to us are going to have some of the things that we really want. They will definitely have some of the pieces of the puzzle that we need in place for future development. So I'm going to support this project tonight.
I'd like to comment that, having been in construction for most of my adult years, I'm acutely attuned to the cost of building up and, you know, raising the whole thing up. The reason, obviously, that's the reason there's, reason there's space for the parking, the surface parking. But with flood requirements, you have to pick it up out of a possible flood. And that will be true of any other parcel that's in that section, in, in a similar section in the River Arts District. So it's very likely that there's going to be parking under other new projects going forward. I suspect that the density increase... I suspect that the density increase, part of the reason for that is to pay for that extra expense. I mean, they need parking for the units, but I think that having the extra units is part of the whole, it seems to me it's part of the whole cost equation, and it seems reasonable to me. And not only does it seem reasonable, but I'm, Councilman Smith referred to this as a bonus being given to the developer, but we're getting more units, and we need more housing units, so that's also a benefit to the city. I mean, I don't see it as a giveaway to have more housing in the city. I also think it's probably questionable whether we're going to be able to impose affordability requirements on places that are expensive to build. I mean, I don't know how that equation can really work out. I suspect that affordability will be elsewhere. I also think that property in the River Arts District is going to get bid up quickly with the RadTip project, which was the intent of the RadTip project, was to encourage development and encourage activation of the River District. So, I mean, for all those reasons, and I recognize that we need affordable housing, there's no question. I recognize that there are drawbacks here. I would like, it'd be nice to see if they could kick in more money, but I think they've worked through their numbers. Therefore, I move to approve the conditional zoning request from River District to mixed-use expansion conditional zone for the Stonewall Apartments project with the requested conditions, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, in that, one, the project redevelops an underutilized property through infill and preservation of an existing historic structure; two, the project substantially complies with the intent of the River Design Review Guidelines; three, the buildings meet many of the requirements of the Future Form-Based Code; and four, the development of residential units in the area will support the redevelopment and revitalization of the River Arts District and the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other comments? Anyone? No? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand for Maggie. And all those opposed? Thank you. Okay. All right. We, okay, we have two more items on our public hearing agenda, and they are related. So, I think we did, as we did this last time, maybe they are presented together? Yeah? No? No, they're not presented together? Okay. We're going to do Item C, the public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance to adopt the River Arts District Form-Based Code for the Greater River Arts District area and the associated property rezoning. We had to delay this item until today because there was a question raised about whether or not I had a conflict under the rules that govern licensed attorneys in North Carolina. We already had dealt with the question of whether or not I had a conflict as an elected person. There are different ethics rules that govern elected officials, and then also for attorneys. So, the school government gave me the all-clear on the elected official conflict-ish question, and the state bar has now said I do not have a conflict to vote on this item. The question came up because my law firm represents, or has represented, one of the property owners in this area to be affected. I do not see anyone from my law firm here tonight, however, so maybe that representation has ceased, but nevertheless, if it continues, I still do not have a conflict and can vote on this item. And the bar said that I had to make that disclosure, so that's why I just said all that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I'm Sasha Vertinsky again. And I am, I've prepared this presentation for you. We did review this code on July 25th, and everybody got a pretty book. You may or may not have brought it back, and I should have reminded you. So, my plan wasn't to go through the entire code point by point, but we can go back for any questions you have. So, with that, this is the over, the map of the proposed districts. There are seven districts. This is, the code boundary is about the same boundary as the Innovation District. The upper boundary is approximately where the salvage station is, here on the north, and here at the end is near Riverview Station and Foundation. Just as a reminder of the kind of environment we're working in, as we were just talking about, the floodplain, which is this light blue area on the left, is a significant portion of this district area. And then on the right, in the bright yellow, are, is Railroad Right-of-Way and Ownership. So, that is another significant piece of this area. The current zoning in this district is characterized by mostly river zoning, urban place, and commercial industrial, so mostly commercial zoning. There are a couple small areas here, if you can see my, here on Robert Street, near where, across Robert Street from White Duck Taco, kind of that section, and then over here on this area of Craven Street. So, approximately south of Waynesville Avenue, I believe that is, almost to Haywood Road. So, our proposed zoning, and, you know, we've talked about the benefits of code, of mixed-form-based code before. What form-based code does basically is it places the priority on creating a good place. It's what we've done in our downtown, we've done that on Haywood Road, and, you know, form-based code is really going back to old design standards that were in place many years ago. Before, in the 50s and 60s, we kind of let the car take over, and we started designing everything around cars. So, form-based code is trying to go back to designing around people first, not cars. And so, the placement of buildings is very important in code. And I will say, at the same time, we worked very closely with the property owners in these areas to make sure that we weren't, to try to make sure that we're not creating problems for them in the future. We did discover some of the problems on Haywood Road, some of the times the code was just a little bit too picky. We've got things like, here's the, you know, in the front of the code book, there's rules for all districts. So, we have a build-two zone, which means, you know, a portion of your frontage of your lot, you're filling up. We have that in downtown today, we have it on Haywood Road. And so, in some areas of this district, we lessened that, because we realized there's some places where it doesn't make sense to try to fill up the entire front. So, we tried to make this code kind of a balance between planning around people, but also making it flexible. We will talk about this a little bit later. There is a parking table in this code. And today, in the River Arts District, the requirements are the rest of the city, and there is a reduction area, which we'll talk about later. And we have some new information about that to share with you. On July 25th, City Council considered the whole code, and the direction we got from council was to remove lodging facilities with 20 guest rooms or less as a permitted use, but also, and also to reconsider the area between the river and the railroad tracks. So, we did that, we took it back to planning and zoning on September 6th. Planning and zoning, kind of re-reviewed the code, it was kind of, we reposted, we re-legalized it, you know, it's kind of almost starting over, not really, but legally, you know, it's a fresh look at the code. They supported the code as written, except they didn't support the changes around lodging facilities, 20 guest rooms and less. They recommended that it stay back to the code version of July 25th. And they also did not recommend removing the area between the railroad tracks and the French Broad River. And they did discuss that. So, I'll just talk about these two issues briefly. Lodging facilities, as many people know, include hotels, inns, and short-term rentals. They don't include bed and breakfasts, those are a different category. All lodging facilities with 21 guest rooms or more, citywide, are reviewed by City Council, just to be super clear about that for everyone at home. And for this discussion, for the River Arts District, we're only really talking about the 20 guest rooms and less. So, I just, for pure illustration purposes, I put, I kind of took the upper picture is from the July 25th code, where lodging facilities, it says permitted, these are the mixed-use districts, and it assumes that 21 guest rooms and more are going to counsel by, you know, by conditional zoning. And so, the lower version is what we have today in the code, per council's direction. And then the second issue, the area between the French Broad River and the railroad tracks, sorry, I shouldn't play that mouse. It's current, most of that area is currently zoned river. Taking that out does not affect flood requirements. You know, our flood requirements supersede zoning. There are certain things that have to be done in the floodplain, regardless of what kind of zoning you have. And we've been discussing this area with property owners in that area since December 2015. So, we've had almost two years of discussions with these folks. One small change that has been made to the ordinance that's in front of you, we discovered kind of late in the process, that there's one little lot here on Little Big Lane, it's owned by Raphael Reddick, and it does not have, it's a non-conforming lot, because it doesn't have road frontage. And so, he is allowed to build one house on it, and it doesn't really match the form-based code. So, he's requested to come out of form-based code, and it actually makes complete sense just to leave him out of that, out of the code area, because he can only do one single-family home, so. There's been some other issues that have recently just come up this week about Ralph Street, so I wanted to address those right off with you all. There is a very small portion of what we call Rad Residential zoning in this area. So, today, here, there is one full lot here on the corner of Bartlett and Ralph, and then these are basically, these three pieces are backyards, unused backyards on Ralph Street. And this is somewhat more steep, you know, the land is going up towards John Street here at the top of the hill. And then we, and there's also this portion here, this is Green's Mini-Mark here, you can see here, and then there's a vacant lot that's owned by someone else, and this is currently zoned commercial industrial. So, today, if, the city owns this lot, but, you know, it's zoned for, you know, you can put lodging there, you could put a kennel there, you know, there's all kinds of things in commercial industrial that don't make sense. The rest of this is a city park property, and here, the bottom, is a fire station, an emergency, an EMT station. So, in the form-based code Rad Residential, what we're looking for is denser development than single-family homes. You know, apartments, triplexes, quadplexes are a great buffer between a commercial district and a single-family district. Back here in the South French Broad area, this is mostly single fam, RS8, so it's single-family zoned. For the parkland, the suggestion to take some of the city-owned land on Ralph Street for residential was made at a public meeting, and we thought that was actually a great idea. We met with park staff and discussed that. This small section of the park here, this finger behind Green's Mini-Mark, is not going to be used for park uses. It's just pretty out of the way, it's across the creek. But again, it's always great to have residential eyes on the, on a park, because it helps with safety and just activating a park space. And lastly, there have been some questions asked about what is the open space public facilities district? It's really, almost every single lot that this is, there's only one lot that's not city-owned land that it's proposed for, and it's a river-linked piece of land, but it's in the floodplain mostly. But it allows for a wide variety of uses for public facilities. You could build gyms, basketball courts, you know, whatever you need for those facilities. And I've talked a little bit with park staff, and that this property is, you know, a part of the bond package that you all have approved for recreation planning. So, and the Parks Department's been engaging with the community over the last, I don't know how many months, about what should happen on that property. So, I think that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sasha, we've gotten a lot of questions about the Ralph Street part of it. Can you put that back up?
Sure.
On the overhead? So, I was just going to ask, you know, one of the interesting things about the section to be affected, looking at the thick black line, which outlines the area to be included in the overlay, it bisects some of those existing residential lots that are RS8 up there on the east side of Ralph Street. And looking, I'm looking at the GIS, so I can see that that half of those properties is not developed, but it looks like it's sloped?
Yes.
That it might be kind of, all right, so it looks like on three, on all, actually on all four of those parcels, there are homes. On the three, it looks like they actually front.
John Street?
John Street.
Yes.
The houses are all the way towards the front, so the, they could, under this idea here, subdivide those lots and then have construction that fronted Ralph Street on the backside?
Correct.
Is that the idea?
Yes.
And it could be more dense than what RS8 allows right now?
Correct. Yes. And, you know, one of the owners has come to several of these meetings and is pretty excited about being able to sell his property and.
Subdivide and sell the property.
Yeah, and have some money for his retirement, basically.
Right, because right now, it's restricted to the single-family use, which is not all that dense. This would allow for dense housing to be constructed there. And then on the commercial piece that the city owns, that little dog leg there that is connected to the Wesley Grant property, currently, what would be the height restriction for construction on that property?
Oh, I believe commercial industrial, I want to say it's 80 feet, let me, it's 80 feet.
Okay, so it would go to a new designation of Rad Residential, which would be, what's the height restriction on the?
Three stories.
Okay. And so, the three, so it would be significantly less than what's allowed there now, but the other side of Ralph would be also this Rad Residential. That's the proposal.
Correct. And I didn't, it was on a slide, but I didn't say it, you know, we got some feedback about that district of people wanting to have, like, if artists, if there was somebody to develop some work-live places for artists, that could they have a gallery? So, we added in some business things in there for uses, not a ton, but a few, so that somebody could actually have a, you know, work-live business in that area.
And the pieces that are the front, commercial industrial, that's the gas station with the access lot next to it?
Yes.
And so, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails about land trust and future uses of that city property. You know, there's no project currently pending for the city property, other than the expansion of the Wesley Grant Center right now. Correct?
Yes. And I think, you know, this district, I mean, it doesn't preclude community land trust from having units on this land.
Right.
I was one of the, I was the author of the Alternatives to Judification Report, so, you know, I understand land trusts, and they're, you know, it's an incredibly important tool. It's one of the few tools we can possibly have to actually.
Sasha, one of the pieces behind Greens there, it is adjacent to the Glen Rock property, is that correct?
Yes.
I know that the residents of that property had been interested in utilizing that land to do a community garden, incorporating some of the neighbors on the other side of the street as well, and that this is kind of an area of friction because of staff's intention on seeing redevelopment there, is my understanding, anyway. I was wondering if you could help me understand that a little bit?
I'm probably not the right person to talk about that. I know Heather Dillashaw is here with Community Development, she might be the better person to talk about that issue.
We can.
Well, I guess what I throw out here is, rather than grind things to a halt all of a sudden, is just to, you know, while things are still in transition right now, I think it might be worth, the next iteration of council having a look at whether that would be a great temporary use for the residents around there.
You're talking about the piece.
The hash marks in the gray there, yes.
And I did understand, I have heard about that, and from what I understand is that folks did understand that was a temporary use, that it wasn't a forever, there will be a community garden there, but I haven't been involved.
Well, there's not currently, is the thing.
Oh, I know, I know.
Yeah.
But I haven't been involved in those discussions.
Okay.
Sasha, just a couple of clarifying questions. So, all of that area that is hashed, both the commercial industrial behind Greens and all the Wesley Grant Center, that's all city-owned land, right?
Yes, yes.
And so, there's nothing that we're going to do tonight that we cannot undo?
Correct. And I, yes, and if there were uses that came up, like, oh, Rad Residential should really have this use added to it, or this form should be added, we can do that.
Or as the conversations around a community land trust progress, and there might be, you know, a recommendation to council that, in fact, maybe the backside of that, you know, along Ralph Street, the backside of the Wesley Grant property, become available for the land, for the land, for use of the land trust, that's a decision we can make.
Absolutely.
So, there's not, there's not a risk here in terms of. So, there's, there's not, there's not a risk here in terms of, sort of, kind of private development, because a lot of the emails that we've gotten have been about gentrification and concerns about that. And this is not, we're not in a situation where the city is looking to-
We're not, it's not on the market.
It's not on the market.
It's a city-owned property.
Right, yeah, okay. Just, so, again, nothing we do tonight is irreversible in terms of the concerns that we've heard from people today.
Well, I don't even know that reversible sounds dire, like, we're about to do something we're going to need to undo. And this is, you know, what we're talking about here is rezoning from a commercial industrial zoning to a Rad, a Rad residential zoning use. So, from a housing perspective, that's a good thing.
Right, sure.
Do we have any other questions, comments, or before I open the public hearing? And I'm sure we'll have some other things that we need to sort of clarify as we move along, but given the number of emails we've received with incredibly incorrect information in them, we'll, we'll probably need to sort some of that out. But, any other questions from council?
I have a question. If we were to vote this down tonight, the Form-Based Code, period, would that be the end of this, or would we be able to readdress it with the new council and?
If we would have to, if we would have to bring it back here, I would offer that this city council gave direction to staff to hire a consultant to work with the community to develop a Form-Based Code proposal. So, from, so on the one hand, you have the technical aspect of a rezoning process. And on the other, you have the problem of a city council giving direction to do something and then potentially not doing it. So, you know, I think there's kind of two different working dynamics there. But, you know, city council is free to vote this down. When could it be reconsidered? I mean, I guess, is your question, is there a one-year bar?
Could it come back up immediately to the, to the next council?
I mean, normally, I mean, for a, for a, for an applicant for rezoning, there would be a one-year bar. Is, is there here? I'd probably have to look at that and get back to you for sure. I mean, normally, this isn't the type of thing, although I wouldn't recommend to turn it down and keep bringing it back. I think you need to probably give it some serious consideration, or there could be some issues.
Okay. Any other questions? We're going to do the parking second, second, okay. Then you get to tell us about more about parking.
More about parking.
Okay, so, if, I'm going to open the public hearing and I have three people that signed up on my public comment sheets, which are usually used for at the end of council, but they said they wanted to talk about this issue, so I'm thinking this is the right time. And the first person I have signed up to speak is Sarah Skinner. Is Sarah still here? Yes. And you'll have three minutes, just watch the lights on the left turn.
I specifically didn't want to be first, but here goes.
Well, it's fine.
No, I didn't say that to you.
You did a good job with that then.
I'm Sarah Skinner, I live in West Asheville. And yesterday, I sent you all an email, you might have seen or not. I have the document here that I attached, I can leave one if you want it. The document is about Oak Park, Illinois. It shows how a community years ago, in the 60s and 70s, came together to welcome people of color into a neighborhood, fighting white flight and invited a diverse population instead, providing circumstances that we today might identify as equity. We have people of color here who need to be included. In my opinion, we need to foster permanent, truly affordable housing. And listening to that last discussion, I was hoping there would be truly affordable housing in this new development as well. I would ask you not to include the Ralph Street area that's being discussed in the Form-Based Code project. The land trust is being developed and I think there looks like to me, there needs to be more communication between them and the city council, so that people can work together in the development of land trusts, so that those visions can be actualized. I recall many candidates speaking positively about the development of land trusts, and I've heard that here today also, I believe. This is an opportunity to show that support. I'm hoping that that, reading about the Oak Park historical situation, might have people thinking a little bit out of the box and maybe coming up with some creative thinking. Asheville has a chance to do what Oak Park did years ago, and that's intentionally to promote equity. Please make that choice for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, this item has nothing to do with the land trust. The land trust was included, funding was included in the Affordable Housing Bond to, to begin that process or to continue that process here in Asheville. So, this is just a Form-Based Code overlay on this land. It does not affect it one way or another in terms of being included in the land trust.
No, it would not preclude it.
It would not preclude it at all.
Right.
So, just to clear that up, because we've gotten a lot of emails about what this has to do with a land trust and it, it doesn't.
Remains eligible to be a future site of a community land trust.
Sure, absolutely.
So, there would still be option for a land trust to be on that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Again, that was my point earlier about, this is city-owned land and we can do with it whatever we want to do with it. Land trust, not land trust, whatever.
Right, okay.
Maybe we can't build an airport.
Maybe the land trust would want to buy land from these private property owners on Ralph Street, but, you know, who knows? Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Dee, I am so sorry. I had two more people signed up to speak on this. I'm, sorry, this was unusual, I just was a little out of, so Matilda Bliss was the next person signed up to speak? Sorry about that.
Thanks, y'all. So, I insist on that. I appreciate having heard responses from Councilwoman Mayfield and Mayor Manheimer. And I appreciate Ralph Street being brought up, however, the reassurances are not enough in this case. First of all, affordable housing would not be needed if the city kept its hands off communities in the first place. That's something that really needs to be brought up here. Forty-six percent of property was purchased, 23% was demolished of 128 structures, 48 families, individuals and businesses were relocated between 1963 and 1965. This crippled black children's education, sense of community and, of course, led to Asheville being second in the nation in gentrification and first in the state in achievement gap. These are not unrelated. South Side is the only distressed census tract in Bunkin County. And so, from Section 2.3 of the document, and I wish the pictures had been shown, it's clear from the images and the materials that are mandated in this Form-Based Code and other factors that these homes slash apartments will not be affordable. So, you know, Sarah's talking about the community land trust meeting and how, and I was, there are 60 people that can attend these meetings and so, that's a huge percentage of the population that needs to be in touch with this process. And, of course, what, if what you say is true about Asheville being the ninth hungriest city, we have ways to, to address this. We could, for instance, build a grocery store on Ralph Street that is accessible to the community and just, yeah, so I would please ask that Ralph Street zoning be reconsidered as something that will allow for affordable housing and also that the city work with community land trust folks to make sure that that is within the jurisdiction and that it can be used by the community in every regard. Thank you.
And the final person I've signed up to speak for this, before I go to raising hands, is Amy Kemp. She seemed very reluctant.
Well, this one.
Oh, yours is in the CBD, I'm sorry. Is that, okay, alright, hang tight, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, Dee, please.
We look forward to it later.
Sorry about that.
Different area of town, yeah. Why am I talking about this?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dee Williams, I'm a native of Asheville and I live in Kennilworth. I've been working with the community land trust for probably several months now, more than several months. And just, one of the issues that we've had in South Side is disengagement of that community because it is economically marginalized and, as Matilda said, is a distressed community. One of the things about Form-Based Code, I understand that it does reduce administrative burdens as far as the city is concerned and it does grease the process along. It deals not, not with zoning so much as it does appearance. Our concern, and we just left the land trust with a consortium of everybody from just ordinary people who live in housing to attorneys. And one of the concerns of several of them is they heard that this meeting was going to happen as pertains to Ralph Street, was that unintended consequences, and we've kind of discussed this before, where appearance takes precedent over use, like most traditional zoning. So, when you go in with density, oftentimes, what will happen is a lot of high-end condos come in and then property values and taxes are escalated and adjoining property owners can't keep up. And that then goes along with gentrification. I just want to just unpack a little bit here. I've seen this before, I saw it on the block, what happened with Eagle Market Street, and I begged the city, literally begged. I was deployed from the U.S. Department of Commerce, the Minority Business Development Agency. And so, unintended consequences, I think the city council at the time thought that the best thing for Eagle Market Street was redevelopment and cited as such, but then the people weren't prepared, the merchants weren't prepared, the community was not, was not engaged, did not have proper input. And so, I'm finding that this is the same similar situation. The gentleman that Sasha spoke highly of is one of my family friends, Arthur Hall. I'm sure he doesn't mind, he's been in service to our country, he stayed in the military a long time. And he, my grandmother, my great-grandmother, used to babysit for him, so I know him well. And let me just say that not only Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall doesn't know what the ramifications are of this, I understand his rationale, but most people, when we worry the community about Ralph Street and Form-Based Code, they're afraid of it and basically have not had a whole lot of input. What I'd like to do, and I know that it seems like it's probably out of the ballpark here, but Ralph Street needs to be pulled off and in light of the fact that these people's time has been spent on this land trust, thank you.
Again, this proposal will have nothing to do with, with the potential for property be, to be included in the land trust. And the rezoning is from just changing the density from RS8 to Rad Residential, which is more, a more dense residential zoning. So, just to continue to try to clarify that. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Good evening, councilwoman, name is Dolores, but I'm on the work with Asheville Black Lives Matter. One of the reasons why I'm coming to resent you today is because I believe that this issue not only implements gentrification in one Form-Based Code, but it also implements gentrification as far as people's lives. I'm one of those folks who grew and was born in Asheville, I come from South Side. I live in South Side and I work in South Side on a daily basis. Form-Based Code is one of the codes that was used to gentrify Asheville from the beginning to the end to what we see now. Form-Based Code has been used to put black businesses out of, out of pure propriety, it's been used to gentrify the block, it's been used to gentrify every black neighborhood that we have here in Asheville presently. If we don't have an elected body that is willing to say that black people here have been denied opportunities, people of color here have been denied opportunities, poor people here have been put out of our neighborhoods because we don't have the money nor the expertise to be able to meet the beast, which is Goliath here, and we are David. And sometimes, David doesn't have the strength to fight. So, what we're coming here today is to say is that basically, a lot of what's going on here in Asheville and what's gone on with the block is that this was a, a footstep of what we see to the block today. And we keep letting this happen, we will see throughout Asheville what happened to the black business districts of the block. We will see people being taken out, taken over and being put out. We'll see Asheville natives being put out, we'll see local businesses being put out, we'll be seeing small businesses put out because they cannot afford to deal with the inflation cost that gentrification will inevitably pass on to other entities. Because once gentrification wipes out the initial property owners and the people who are there, it would, it's a trickle-down effect. So, what I'm coming here today to say is that not only is this issue with African-Americans, people of color, Latinx and poor folks, this is an issue with small business owners and other folks. We need to look at Asheville as a whole, we need to look at Asheville as a living, entertaining and breathing being. We're looking at Asheville as a one-sided event right now. We're having a lot of people come in, come out, that don't necessarily have to stay here over time. And the folks who have to stay here are suffering. And they're suffering because we can't afford to stay here. Gentrification is the reason why. Form-Based Code is one of those reasons. If we cannot have folks who can come in and create communities, that the communities here that were initially put here are meant to be here, then what happens to the people who come here who can't afford to stay here? We're going to all get put out. This is where I'm at, this is where a lot of local natives are at, this is where people who are coming here from are at too. We're just facing an uphill battle that can never be fought because we have nothing to fight against but money. This is not a money issue, we need to have self-sustainable communities. One of the things that we can get self-sustainable-
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the way in the back.
This will be really short. I live in South Asheville.
Oh, state your name.
I'm Delaney. I live in South Asheville and I just want to say that I agree with everything that was just said. I forget your name, I'm sorry.
Dolores, thank you.
Dolores, I agree with you 100%. But, I live in South Asheville, I live in Shiloh, on the edge of it. And I've watched as people have moved in and built up like eight different houses at a time with, with low-paid contractors and people in our community, me and my neighbors included, of course, you know.
Stay, stay in front of the microphone.
We lose, we lose power, we lose water, we get no notification from the city that that's going to happen sometimes for like 48 hours at a time. And it's just, I mean, it's fine for me, but, you know, there's older people in my community and I'm right near, you know, places where a lot of people who live around me have this, have like learning disabilities and things like that. And so, it's just really inconvenient, I know, for a lot of people that, for those underpaid contractors to work and cause these problems in South Asheville with regards to development. I mean, it's just something I've witnessed personally, that I've experienced, that I wanted to bring forward, that's all.
Thank you.
I yield my time.
Hi, my name is Kate Tenon and I am a member of the Western North Carolina Green Party. I want to echo everything that Dee and Dolores and Sarah and Matilda have said tonight. I agree with them that applying Form-Based Code to Ralph Street will make it more costly and unaffordable. I think it will cause gentrification, I think we have too many problems with that already. This current city council says it supports equity and diversity and affordability. And indeed, we heard this over and over again from the incumbents running for reelection and from all the other candidates. And this is a perfect opportunity to walk your talk. So, I ask that you remove Ralph Street from this Form-Based Code designation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Annalise Monday and I'd like to talk-
Hi, my name is Annalise Monday and I'd like to talk about the slopes in the River Arts District Neighborhood Transition. These are above Long Craven Street. And as you can see, a lot of those are green and those are very vulnerable slopes to landslides and we do not have an ordinance to protect them. What's being ignored is the fact that the Buncombe County Landslide Hazardous Maps warn against excavation on these, on most of these slopes rated upper threshold of instability and hazardous due to potential debris flow pathways, which means where the earth flows have had a landslide before, they're going to happen again. Those are potential debris flow pathways. And we know about the flood in Houston. The grasslands could have absorbed some of the rain, but to make matters worse, officials encouraged development in the flood plan without regard to future risks, and I don't think you want to be the officials who encourage development without regard to future risks. And this is a sloopy town and we need some sloopy rules. Asheville's new comprehensive plan includes a planning for a climate resilient assessment that states these potential debris flow areas are combined with the threat of climate change are the most vulnerable to landslide, but no action plan for the perfect storm. It does recommend updating the steep slope ordinance, but these are 2,220 feet in elevation and do not include these lower slopes that are rated hazardous. The North Carolina State Senior Geologist, Rick Wooton, told me that 80% of the last 200 landslides in Western North Carolina are due to human activity involving cut slopes and fill slopes. Unfortunately, we have the same rules as when this developer in 2007 cut these, clear-cut these slopes. The city told me there were no rules for excavating or grading on these slopes for erosion control, retaining walls, and nothing has changed in 10 years. The city recently told me, the building department, there are no rules regarding grading or excavating for hazardous slopes. The planning department told me, all new construction must comply with North Carolina Building Codes, but this is not reassuring since they have no rules for these kind of slopes. And when I contacted the state, they said to contact the city. So consequently, I have spent, I live up here and consequently, I have spent a small fortune on erosion control. My driveway collapsed, it pulled the water away from my house, and I know some developer would love to come--
Thank you.
--and do that.
Is that on amboy?
No, this is on Craven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Yes, in the very back. There's.
Now, mayor and members of council, my name's Albert Snead. I represent Asheville Waste Paper. It's an essential business to this community. They've been in the community since 1941. They've been down on the river since the '60s. They're located between the railroad tracks and the river, approximately 12 acres, three lots, five buildings, and a number of canopies. They do not want to be form-based zoned because there's a possibility of flood down there. You could get into a situation where you had to rebuild a building and the cost would be enormous to put up a form-based building. This is a new form of zoning in the city and there's not been a lot of experience with it and I can sympathize with a lot of fears that have been stated here. We would ask that you pull our three lots out. Leave it where it is. Sometime in the future, if it's working out and it seems to make sense, it could be rezoned. I noticed you pulled out one, Ms. Vatunsky pulled out one lot. We ask you to pull this lot out, these three lots, and let us continue doing what we're doing that's valuable for the community. Mr. Coon wrote a letter from the Planning and Zoning. He said he was personally in favor of form-based zoning, but there are a lot of businesses that had a lot of apprehension about form-based zoning, and perhaps the thing to do would leave them out and let's go down the road and see whether or not their fears are justified. And if they're not, then they could be rezoned into form-based zoning. But this is a business that's been there, operating since the '60s, and if they're forced to move, where do you move that you're next to the railroad in Buncombe County, that you have access to heavy trucks and you're in industrial zoning? I don't know of any such place. And they've used railroad in the past and they like to have the availability of railroad in the future. So we'd ask you to take us out. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so behind you, Casey.
Hey, my name is Matt Shepherd.
I just would like to say as a citizen here that I echo the sentiments of Mrs. Williams and Ms. Venable and others who spoke on the overarching issue, especially the history of gentrification, the history of redlining, and the way that comes about may not be a direct move upon people in a specific neighborhood or area, but to go back to what Mrs. Williams said about the unintended consequences of things that we do, I would like to urge us to really think, and I remember and appreciate Councilwoman Mayfield bringing up the fact that things that are decided, it's not set in stone and can keep. And to that end, to really think about that because we make decisions, we do things, this looks good, but then, you know, we do one thing and then it leads to this and leads to that, and there's some very vulnerable, you know, it's not like some high-income neighborhood right next to there in South French Broad and on Southside. And so to just think about how we do this because that's also, all the development, it's moving south, you've got South Slope, you've got things towards the hospital, that's very desirable land for some future time that somebody is looking at dollar signs. And the people who live there don't have a lot of wherewithal to fight that off, so that's where us as people and us as council have to also consider our impact, the impact in the future, and try to be responsible to those citizens as well. And I know we want to make Rad, the Rad, this amazing place. I love the idea of a grocery store, something as, and as somebody who moved here and lived a lot of different places, and I lived downtown and I've lived in Chicago and I've lived in New York and I've lived in different places, the thing that struck me, I was like, well, I live downtown, but there's really nowhere for me to get groceries, there's nowhere for me to do like lots of the day-to-day little things. And same thing goes in those kind of, you know, it'd be great to make it, really have everything that people need who are going to live there and maybe if they're not super wealthy and they, they're just walking around their bike, they can get things that are nearby. So those kinds of things to be thinking about as we move forward in this town and with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Casey.
Just very briefly, I would like to plead on behalf of the renters of Asheville for you to vote against any expansion of short-term rentals into the River Arts District and elsewhere in the city. With more than 10 million visitors each year into a city of 90,000 residents and with the terrible housing shortage looming over us, it is increasingly ludicrous to argue for more tourist housing and decreasing citizen housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Larson. I live on Park Square, which is adjacent to the Rad Tip Neighborhood Transition Zone. And I beg of you, please, just pass the Form-Based Code already so we can get on with making the improvements and adjustments as they need to be made over time. Nothing is perfect. You know, we're going to keep making changes to it, that's kind of the point. But I just, I would like for the two years or more than two years of work that people that live in the River Arts District and around it have spent with staff and the consultants that came in developing this, and I'm a little bit disappointed about some of the last-minute changes. It's kind of like, okay, well, this has been going on for two years. Where were you during that time where we were talking about this? Lots of, lots of, lots of meetings, several drafts coming out. So the process has been there and I wish that we could have discussed a lot of this stuff during that time so we would have had more time to engage more people. But again, this is not going to set it in stone and whether or not you include Ralph Street, maybe there need to be, you know, going back to the neighbors there to make sure that there's true buy-in, but maybe that's not something that's completely irreversible either. So I just beg of you, please, pass this because it actually provides a lot of protection for the people that live nearby as well in terms of the size of the buildings, so I would really appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Tom Halt again. Resident of West Asheville, want to agree with Ms. Williams and Dolores and all the points they made. I have some specific points to talk about, though. I think it's disingenuous to say that the zoning change will not preclude community land trust in the future because once it's higher density, it's going to be worth a lot more money. There's no way people who are trying to obtain property for future years are going to be able to pay those rates. And I also would like to see the, and I'll admit the verbiage on the amendment is a bit, excuse me, unclear, but the cap on short-term rentals under 30 units, I think is very prudent. It seems like a loophole that developers are trying to take advantage of to get away with doing a lot of Airbnb, which we know is a problem in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Tornow, Curve Studios, River Arts District. I would like to suggest that council vote yes on the Form-Based Code as it was originally presented on July 25, 2017. I will echo Rachel Larson's comments that there have been huge amounts of time and energy committed to this process by myself and a bunch of my neighbors, either business neighbors or residential neighbors, and when the Form-Based Code came to council, our understanding from staff was that all of the major issues had been resolved. So when you guys brought up these two new issues that none of us had had any idea about or had any opportunity to consider or speak to--
Short-term rentals and--
Lodging and the removal of the property between the river and the railroad. Those are your two, that's what you're considering tonight as far as I understand. And now there's more than that, but all I'm saying is if you want your citizenry to stay engaged with you, you must respect the feedback that they give you. The Form-Based Code went throughout the River Arts District Neighborhood over the course of two years. It went in front of the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission and was passed, edified there, and it did not include, there was huge discussion about the removal of the property from the railroad to the river in four different meetings with the A R C, and they did not agree that that was the right thing to do. It went to Planning and Zoning and they supported the Form-Based Code. It came to y'all in July and you were like, yeah, maybe not, we're going to do these other things. And so it went back to Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning at that point agreed with a bunch of us that showed up at that meeting and said the process to consider these other amendments really, it violates the idea of democracy. And so they were not able to support those changes. So if you want people like me to serve on the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, you need to honor what these commissions are telling you and you need to take their advice because what we have been trained for the last 15 years is that what council wants is for our neighborhoods to organize and that we get together and give you a solid voice as to what our neighborhood wants so that you guys don't have to listen to every single citizen in Asheville. We created the River Arts District Business Association to be able to do that for you. And so I really feel like you need to respect the process that you have set in motion and listen to your commissions and your boards and your neighborhood associations and do what they ask.
My only clarification on that would be it's not so we don't have to listen to everybody and so that it's a community-based process. That's all.
Can I say one other thing?
Well, let's see, I think we've got some other--
Okay. Just, it's not fair to single out the River Arts District to remove lodging from it and nowhere else in the commercial districts of the city.
Thanks. Okay. All right, if we can't control our comments from the audience, you'll have to leave. Okay? All right, do I, I think I had, Kim, you were next, I believe. And then Hetty, I'll get you.
I'm trying to take up twice the time tonight, but I'm going to appeal to each of you as my fellow Ashevilleans. I don't, actually, I, you know, feel bad for being in this situation because you're in a really tricky spot where you can't leave the River Arts District without a plan and you need density, you need transit to work, you need housing to work, you need infrastructure to work. You've made promises to businesses, you've made commitments to the community, and no one can really be fully pleased here. The River Arts District Form-Based Code looks like what I hear in the community, the new redlining, the new gentrification. And we have to acknowledge why it looks like that because I know that we've had a long process of two years going to this, but our city that I love and you love very much has decades of systems of oppression and systems that are broken by design. So when you have the River Arts District having millions of dollars poured in, as you know, and downtown growing from the South Slope, I heard this, the Walton Street Community Pool, the Walton Street Pool Community Group said it just looks like we're more valuable now so you can just run right over us. So when you're considering the Form-Based Code, just realize we're going to be back here because if you're zoning it for housing, and then we just watched a night zoning for housing that wasn't affordable, it breaks trust. Thank you for your consideration.
Oh, Hetty, I'm sorry.
My name is Hetty Fisher, again. I own property in the River Arts District on Deepo Street. And my concern is with the process that we spent over two years in charrettes and in meetings with the staff trying to address some of the development issues in the River Arts District. We came up with what I think we hoped was a good plan and then bit by bit, it's being changed and sort of altered, eaten away without our input. And I'm disappointed because you asked for our input all along the way and now you're wanting to make changes without any of our input. And I'm disappointed in that. Thanks.
So just to clarify, as I understand the proposal tonight on the agenda, it is as recommended. You don't think so?
No.
It's not. It's not the original Form-Based Code.
Okay. No, it is as recommended except for the issue of short-term rentals. Right now, it includes all of the land in it. Nothing's been removed. We're hearing requests tonight to remove things, but nothing's been removed. It's all as proposed. The only issue, and I don't recall if it's in the staff report or not, was the issue of whether to remove the lodging use of short-term rentals, whole-house short-term rentals. Okay? Everyone understand that? Does anyone else want to speak on this item? I'm just going to tell you to pull that mic down. It's not just some--
Is that good?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Helene Green with River View Station. I've been in the River Arts District since 1990, just so that you know that. I've been there for 27 years and I'd like to address also, I agree with Hetty and with Patty about process. This Form-Based Code, it's been a two-year process of community meetings and the issue that you're talking about, the short-term rentals with, or it's the lodging under 20 units, this is not something that's been brought up during all those, all those months and time of all those charrettes and the meetings that we've had with all the community members, and that has not been part of the process. So that was something that was added with our community--
So, that was something that was added without community input. And I agree with the thought that if you're wanting to have input from community, that there needs to be respect for what the community comes up with, with our, with what was recommended. So, adding that in the Form-Based Code, I feel is a violation of what, of the trust between council and between community and what you've asked us to do. So, I would recommend not, not changing that aspect of the Form-Based Code. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. And you were first.
I am.
You are first.
I didn't expect to have as many folks speaking out on this tonight. And it's great to hear all the passion and the interest in what for a lot of people is kind of wonky Form-Based Code stuff. But everyone who's come up here tonight understands that zoning law deeply impacts the way that we live our lives. And so, I appreciate the passion that y'all are bringing. In regards to the short-term rental piece, and I guess to speak to process first, when we did the downtown master plan, when we did, when we were doing the comprehensive plan, we're gathering all sorts of input from all sorts of places. And then, it'll come before this body. And it's part of our job to contextualize what's happening in each of these with the rest of the city. I think that when, especially with this process, I mean, most of the other processes, there's been more stuff that got changed. I mean, this is like 99% of what went through the community process is in here. We are up here willing to address short-term rental piece because of the broader implications of that rule. The idea that the RAD is being singled out is incorrect in that what's been moving here on council is a more broad examination across all the commercial districts with the RAD going first. And that's because we're at this place with the zoning.
Okay. All right. We don't, we're, this is the part where we get to say something.
This is my perspective.
Plus, Gordon, this is the second-to-last meeting, so.
Why you got to pick it up, man? Killing me over here.
This process has got so much input. It was really wonderful. I think the staff learned a lot from doing the Form-Based Code along Haywood Road and were able to apply those lessons to doing it in the RAD. And we got a lot of really quality input and it's really reflected in this plan. The fact that city council is saying, "Hey, we want to make sure that we aren't going to squeeze out locals to make room for tourists in one of Asheville's most popular, attractive, wonderful places, full of so many folks," is a credible, reasonable perspective, held by thousands and thousands and thousands of people. So, dismissing it. Doesn't make sense. The, the piece, one thing I want to say about STRs is something about the language. It's not been used here tonight, but I've seen it used, is that there's an STR ban. That's incorrect. What this does is it removes lodging as a use by right. It would still allow lodging in the form of conditional zoning before this body. So, it is not a ban, but it is a removal of the use by right. I think that's important legally for everyone to understand. It's not a ban. And I, oh, I wanted to talk about Ralph Street. So, I think everyone's on the same page in wanting to make sure that we are ensuring the opportunity for more affordable housing and more opportunity for people in the city of Asheville. The means by which we get there, I think, is where the disagreement is. The perspective that I'm taking is that that increased density tends to lead to more affordability. This Form-Based Code rezoning will not take this off the table for community land trust. And I'm so thrilled that people are showing up to make that happen because we've got money on the table and land ready to go just for those efforts. Because it's that important to everyone up here. We heard earlier tonight about our Blue Ribbon Commission coming forward where we're trying to take everything with this equity lens and not repeat the mistakes of the past. That's why we're here, is to try to correct and repair some of the institutional racism that has enacted suffering and lack of opportunity on the people of Asheville for generations. So, I'm going to be supporting what's before us tonight for those reasons. And I understand that everyone's going to agree with me, but I just wanted you to understand my rationale.
I think that what I've heard in some of the comments tonight is a misapprehension of what a Form-Based Code is. One person talked about living in New York and in Chicago where there were shops in the neighborhood. Well, a Form-Based Code designs an area where there are shops in the neighborhood, where you, where people can live and work within walking distance, where they get out of their cars, which makes life more affordable. It isn't automatically necessarily a gentrification plan. It depends what gets built and who does what. But it tends to return, cities, as staff pointed out at the beginning of this, to the way cities used to be built before we were completely involved with cars. Like, this city used to have the best trolley system in the country. And it has sidewalks in all the old neighborhoods because people used to build sidewalks when they built homes. So, it's trying to go back to that kind of a livable community. And it is in no way necessarily going to make things high-end. The question I have about this is, the complaint we've had in the, between the river and the railroad, has almost entirely come from Asheville paper. Is there any reason that we couldn't leave Asheville paper out of this rezoning? We're, we're saying that this rezoning is going to preserve, it's going to grandfather existing uses and that they'll be able to continue with their operation. If they don't want to be zoned this way, do we have to zone them this way? I mean, it's three acres, right? Isn't that what I heard? I mean, it's, I mean, it's not going to change uses in the foreseeable future because we have to recycle our paper. So, I'm wondering if we, if that is, is that possible? You just draw a line there?
I guess, I don't know. I don't want to cut you off, but I'll answer your question with something that I was going to say. Again, a little bit of information around Form-Based Codes. So, Form-Based Codes alone do not cause gentrification. Asheville is gentrifying because we are super popular. People like to come here and people like to move here. And that's making it less affordable for a lot of people. And I think this council and certainly the people who have just been elected are intent on doing the things that we can to continue to make Asheville affordable. The Form-Based Code doesn't change any of that. It doesn't make it better or worse. What a Form-Based Code does is it takes a place that is, that somebody has decided is a special place. And somebody earlier, one of the speakers mentioned that the RAD is a special place. And what a Form-Based Code does is it says, "We're going to make a decision about what this looks like as it develops. We, the community, are going to make that decision." If we don't have a Form-Based Code, it's individual developers, one after the other, making the determination about what that place looks like. And individual developers don't pay attention necessarily to what happens around them. They don't pay attention to the architecture or the design. They build what they want to build. And what this is an opportunity for us to do is to say, "This is what we as a community want our River Arts District to look like. This is what we want it to feel like for people who live there and for people who come there." And, and it, again, it doesn't, it alone is not going to drive gentrification. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make a difference there. And Cecil, to your point about could we exempt a particular property, particularly one that is so prominently placed, is, yeah, it doesn't change the use now, but in five years, 10 years, it, that use may change, maybe 20 years. But whenever that use changes, what we're saying with this Form-Based Code is that when it changes, we want it to look like what we want it to look like. We don't want to let whoever buys it make the decision about what that looks like. We, we're trying to build a place that is special and that is unique and that is, that is about, that is pedestrian-friendly, that is bicycle-friendly, that people want to be. And, and we do that by making those decisions collectively. So, that's, that's my, that's my thing on the Form-Based Code. While I have the mic, I also just want to address the process and the short-term rental issue. And as someone who is a deep, deep believer in process, anybody who knows me knows that. I am a deep believer in process. And I, and it disturbs me greatly that we actually are stepping out of the process to make this short-term rental decision. I realize it has not been part of the discussions. I also realize that we are injecting a use issue into a discussion about form. And I know that that jumps the rules. That's not like, in some ways, we shouldn't be doing it. But here's the thing, to Gordon's point, what we keep learning about our town is that short-term rentals continue to be a problem. And we do not have a handle on it yet. And that is driving, that is one of the main factors driving the unaffordability of our city. And we have to get a grip on it and we have to get a grip on it wherever we can get a grip on it. And this has come before us today and it is an opportunity for us to grip it. The Haywood Base, the Haywood Form, Haywood Road Form-Based Code is coming back to us and that is a chance for us to get a grip on it. And we're going to do it. And I, I know it is, I apologize from the bottom of my process-based heart. It is not, we should not be doing it, but we have to take advantage of the opportunities that are in front of us to try to get ahead, try to get a handle on this issue. And again, it is, the motivation behind that is around trying to ensure Asheville's or, to the degree we can, keep Asheville affordable going forward. So, I apologize, but we're, I'm doing it anyway. So, I'm going to be supporting what's been presented tonight.
Anybody else like to comment?
No, I would, I'd be willing to make a motion. Because I think we are, I think as part of the process, it's worth taking a vote on what planning and zoning has approved. So, I would move to approve the River Arts District Form-Based Code as presented on July 25th and find the request as reasonable as in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the code will encourage infill development and facilitate vibrant mixed-use neighborhoods. Two, the rezoning will complement the future Rattiff road realignment and infrastructure improvements. And three, the proposal was developed with a robust input process that included input from property owners, businesses, and stakeholders.
Do I have a second?
With Cecil's motion, lodging is back in?
It's just as it came out of P and Z, so the lodging uses would not be changed.
For clarification, when you say it will not be changed, it is?
Meaning, there's not a ban on short-term rentals?
Wouldn't be a ban either way.
Well, okay. Correction, there wouldn't be a restriction. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, the motion fails for lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
Yeah. Move to approve the River Arts District Form-Based Code and find that the request is reasonable as in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the code will encourage infill development and facilitate vibrant mixed-use neighborhoods. Two, the rezoning will complement the future Rattiff road realignment and infrastructure improvements. And three, the proposal was developed with a robust input process that included input from property owners, businesses, and stakeholders.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Questions? To clarify, Gordon's motion does include a restriction on whole-house short-term rentals.
Right.
Not?
Home stays remain the same.
I just want to say thanks to the staff. This has been a really long and really complicated process and appreciate all your work and, and being responsive to us and our ever-changing suggestions.
David, are you regretting this already? It's almost quarter eight. Bet Hendersonville jurnes before now. All right. I got a motion and a second. We have compliments to the staff. And thank you to all of the folks that showed up. I think this is, I'm trying to recall, this is the third time this has been on our agenda and we've had, I think the more, more we put it on the agenda, the more folks showed up. So, I, I'm thankful for all of your efforts to participate in this process.
And I, just to clarify, I'm going to vote against it, but it's specifically because I don't think we should include uses in zoning. I mean, I.
In the Form-Based?
Yeah, in the Form-Based Code, rather. Excuse me, the code. I just, I think it should be handled comprehensively for the city and I hope the incoming council will do that and come up with some more rational rules than we have now. But that's the reason I'm going to vote against this proposal.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, let's do, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay? And any opposed, raise your hand. Okay. You got that, Maggie? Okay. All right. We still have one more public hearing item. Whoever wants to stay and talk about parking. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Article 11 of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances to remove river parking reduction area in its entirety.
I'm just pushing on.
No, do it. Yeah. Push, go. Go. This is going to be easy. Go. Well, then, don't say it again. Vote against it.
Okay.
What I said before.
Okay, hit it, Sasha. Just hit it.
Okay.
Okay, everybody else, quiet down. Ooh, Kate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. So, we're here to talk about the parking reduction area. In 2011, staff put into the U D O.
Mayor? What? Apparently, we need.
We need to have a motion for the.
For the rezoning part.
Of those properties in the code. And their motion is.
That there's going to be an ordinance to change the text and change the zoning of the various properties.
So, you need, we need both of those.
I need the second motion as well.
Right, right, right. Sorry about that.
I was thinking I could do either or.
That's what, we all looked at that way.
Coming in, coming in hard with the second motion. I move to approve the rezoning of the real properties described in the Exhibit A map and associated with the River Arts District. Is that it?
Yeah.
With the River Arts District Form-Based Code and find that the request is reasonable as in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the rezoning will encourage infill development and vibrant public realm and facilitate healthy mixed-use neighborhoods. Two, the rezoning will complement the future Rattiff road alignment and infrastructure improvements. And three, the rezoning embodies redevelopment goals in a designated innovation district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Wait, your second is?
I did. Okay. All those, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay. And now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I raised my hand at the wrong time. I came in late. We were talking.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. Now, now we are ready for parking.
Thank you. So, parking. In 2011, the River District, we're trying to encourage redevelopment of the River District. And so, parking reduction was put into effect. And this was not for the entire Form-Based Code area. It really comes from south of the 240 Bridge down to Riverview Station on the east side of the river. It's not include the west side of the river. Now that we have this Form-Based Code, two minutes old, or how long is it? We have this new parking table now for the Form-Based Code. And it.
It's getting bigger.
Sure. Code Studio, who is a consultant for this code as well as the Haywood Road Code, their philosophy around parking is to make parking not be a barrier to development. That, you know, we do have to accommodate cars, we have to make sure that cars don't become a problem in our neighborhoods, but at the same time, we're not developing around cars. Right? So, we have this table and it's set up differently than our U D O table. So, the reductions really become, what we heard, I should say, from the district and from property owners and businesses, is that parking is an issue. I think we all know that in the River District. And that they didn't, they were concerned about reductions being allowed to future development because they're bringing more visitors to the, to the area. I will credit our director, Todd Okulachany, with this analysis. So, the question came up between, you know, a few weeks ago and now, are we really, are we, are we increasing parking requirements or are we, you know, what's happening with this? So, bear with me a little bit. I'll try to explain this. So, under the current parking requirements for a residential unit, it's one space per unit if you have two bedrooms or less. If you have three bedrooms or more, it's two spaces per unit. Right? So, but in that reduction area. So, but in that reduction area, the reduction is more for smaller projects, and bigger, in a smaller reduction, the larger your project is. All of the yellow areas mean that, under the UDO today with this reduction, it's actually more, it's more, requiring more parking than under the new Form-Based Code. So, the Form-Based Code actually is kind of a reduction in itself. It's kind of, we're trying to really strike that balance between provide parking, but don't provide a ton of parking, like, you know, in terms of minimums. So, under the Form-Based Code, .75 space per unit, food and beverage, one space per 250 can sound like a lot, but if you think about 250, it's 25 feet by 10 feet, and how many seats you can get in that space, you know, let's see. So, a third, one-third of your seat, you know, I think the UDO actually demands more parking. So, we're kind of, we're cleaning it up. And if we find that if this is not enough parking and not stringent enough, then we can come back and revamp that. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, everybody clear on that?
At almost 8:00.
Certainly looks simpler.
The one area, I will say, I should not leave out, is that with guest lodging, this code is a little bit more stringent for lodging. So, .75 spaces per guest room, whereas under, you know, our current UDO, it's .5 per guest room. And there were some reductions further than that. So, for hotels, it actually demands a little bit more.
Anybody have any questions for Sasha on this? No, it's not... Do you want me to open the public hearing?
Oh, do we have...
All right, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item, parking in the River Arts District? All right. Yeah, why not?
Yeah. Hello, I'm Matt Wallace again. I didn't have any plans to speak, but I wanted to at least throw in, throw in something to consider. As Sasha said, we need to design for, for form and for the building's sake versus cars. I agree that the Form-Based Code and some of the, the proposed parking changes are probably fine for 85 to 95 percent of the lots or the properties down in the River Arts District. There are, however, a few, and I own a lot on Robert Street, that's, that's going under, that has now gone under the new zoning with the reduced size available to build right across from Park Square. And it gets to where even with the reduced allowance for parking that's currently now, to be able to fit a building on a lot that is like, less than .2 acres, and even be able to provide a handicap space in one or two spaces, it severely limits what you can do on that lot. And this gets to where you're basically having to design around parking. So, this is with driving a car into the lot, even if it's around from underneath, as well as with the, the build-two zones. So, with some of the new code requirements, which I am in favor of, but having to pull the building forward, having to cover your street frontage, if you have a lot that's 40 or 50 feet wide, you can't provide an ingress and egress for a car on some of those lots. So, you're, you're automatically gonna be faced with some sort of a variance to be able to build on that lot. So, just sitting here, listening to all this, to have parking not be a barrier to development, and we do have the 30 parking spaces break, you know, for a lot of the lots that are gonna be under a half an acre, you're never gonna fit 30 parking spaces on property like that anyway. So, I would recommend, and I know I'm late in the game, but looking at some sort of an exemption for lots that are under something like .25 or .4 acres, to where you're gonna be severely restricting what you can build on that type of a lot. This gets back to the overall providing other parking. There are allowances to where you can have off-site parking, and this gets into partnerships with people to provide parking elsewhere to be able to service those lots. But in particular, for those smaller lots, even with the restricted parking in place, super hard to put anything on there. And I realize that we're not going up to the full UDO parking. If we find the happy medium, you're still gonna be eliminating a lot of what could be outstanding development in accordance with the Form-Based Code on some of the smaller lots. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Question, what, wait, you're looking at me? You wanna say something? No? Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion, or comments?
Just a quick comment, 'cause I referenced it earlier. So, I appreciate, and I do understand that the, the parking requirements in the Form-Based Code are less than the parking requirements in our current code. And, and I appreciate that, and I realize that that is, you know, that is, that is in the direction that, that, that smart growth and new urbanism and all that is going. I get that, that's great. I'm, I'm probably, I'm just wanting, I'm wanting us to be a step ahead of that, and I realize we haven't had the conversations, probably with the River Arts District property owners, to, to, to get to where I want us to be, which is, you know, as I said earlier, new models of shared parking and, and, you know, eventually, what I would love for us to do is get rid of mandatory minimum parking requirements here and in other parts of the city, like we have done in downtown, just because we know that that is, that is the best way to create the kind of walkable, dense, bikeable places that, that, that I think we wanna build in this city. I also acknowledge, as I just said, that we're probably not quite there yet. We just haven't had the conversations that we need to have. So, I don't necessarily expect anybody to go with me on this, but I'm just gonna put my stake in the ground on parking, that I, I want us to be moving in that direction. And so, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna vote against this as a principle thing, it's not reflective of your work, which is great.
I would add to that, as I have commented in the past here, transportation is changing really, really fast. GM's gonna start running a fleet of driverless cars in New York City in January. They're running on the streets of Phoenix now. There's a driverless bus operating in Las Vegas now. Driverless Ubers are around the corner. We're gonna see, I've, I've talked to people who do short-term rentals, and a lot of their people arrive in Ubers from the airport. We aren't gonna need as much parking in the future. And so, I'll join you on this one, 'cause I think we should, we should not require too much parking. We're not gonna need it sooner than we think.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion? All right, somebody...
I move to approve the wording amendment removing the river parking reduction area from Section 7-11-2C5 in its entirety, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, provides a consistent parking standard to support the viability of local businesses. And two, ensures that the zoning code can adapt to the changing needs of the River Arts District as it continues to grow.
That's a motion, do I have a second? This is dramatic. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the change failed. I guess we felt like putting our foot down on something, although I think this...
You can still, you can still second it.
Yeah, well, no. No, Brian was, Brian was, though, yeah, he did it. So, you guys will tell us how this screws up this very comprehensive planning you did there.
I think that there's not the zoning district match to the parking anymore, is that correct?
Parking's tied to the River Arts District Design Review, yeah, it's tied to that along, so it doesn't go...
Nigger pardon, Council. The River, the parking reduction was tied to River Arts, the area that was mapped for signage and other purposes in a day, the, the River, the code that we've approved tonight is beyond some of those areas that would, would be benefit from this, this wording in the, in the ordinance that remains.
So, what have I wrought, which I did not intend to wrought?
No, way to go.
Well, I think for some areas under rad-form code now, some of them will be able to take a greater reduction in parking.
A 50% reduction.
That's right. It'll still be in place.
Okay.
That's right. So, if, if we have, you know, we, if we notice problems, we can certainly update Council on that.
Yeah, let us know.
Well, yeah.
The ripple effect.
Right. And again, I mean, maybe, maybe this is, maybe this is...
Maybe we are gonna move forward now.
Right, puts on the table the conversation about new parking models, which would be great.
Yeah.
Gosh.
Sorry, can I just add one small piece of information, which we have no bearing on this at all, but to Mr. Wallace's point, that we do have our provision in there for if you have a narrow lot, you're never prohibited from having a driveway. You always, you know, you, the build-two zone, it will never kill that.
I don't feel like this vote turned on that issue, although it was a good point.
No, I know.
Okay, I'm gonna...
I'm sorry. The other thing I meant to say is there's also shared parking is a viable thing, so in the Form-Based Code, that if you, like, say if there was a church, and they're only using their parking certain times, you don't have to build all the spaces if you have a written agreement with them to use their parking. That's happening on Haywood Road as well.
May I make a recommendation? That this, go to PED, this item around parking, so we can have a look at things, and Julie, if you'd be willing to send over any guidance?
Sure, I can do that.
Boy, all those River people are gonna be mad they left early.
Yeah. Yeah. It's gonna be a surprise.
By the way, Julie, I was prepared to support it until I heard your talk about the principle, and I agreed with you.
I way underestimated my influence on that point, so...
You're persuasive.
Take it away. Okay, so Boards and Commissions recommends that we reappoint John Menkes to the ABC Board.
So, moved?
That's the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lovely. Boards and Commissions recommends that we appoint Raymond Tweed to the Fireman's Relief Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The, and for the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee, we had a lot of applications, and so, the Boards and Commissions recommends that we give the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee some time to look over all the applications and get their, and hear what they recommend. So, we're gonna delay, delay a decision on that.
Second.
I don't think we really have to vote on that.
Yes. All right, Amy Kemp, you are now up to talk about your item.
Hi, there, it's Council. My name is Amy Kemp. Whoops. And I'm from Chesnut Hills, and come to talk about, very briefly, a subject I've talked with most of you about, short-term rentals. I'm intimately familiar with short-term rental market. I've been involved in it since 2011. I saw a headache or, or issues coming from the very beginning, and I feel like most of the issues that we've talked about tonight, affordable housing, availability, and our ability to control the destination of Asheville resides in the short-term rental conversation. So, I urge you to continue to look at short-term rentals, the impact they're having on our, our city, and consider the fact that there is money coming out continually from our neighborhoods and from short-term rentals into the TDA, where we cannot control the outcome or the way that money is spent from that point forward. And so, again, I just urge you to continue to look at this issue and analyze it completely and recognize the impact that it's having on our housing availability. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have signed up to speak is Ben Stockdale. Thank you for your patience.
My name is, my name is Ben Stockdale, and I am here on behalf of RenewAVL. RenewAVL is a nonpartisan, nonprofit community campaign, working to establish a commitment by the City of Asheville to power its municipal operations by 100% renewable energy. In 2007, Resolution 0790 was passed to establish a 2% annual greenhouse gas emissions reduction until an 80% reduction is reached. In 2011, Council passed Resolution 1177, which increased the annual goal to 4%. By 2029, the carbon reduction goal for the City of Asheville will be met. Although we are, are still on track for this goal, for the past two years, the annual carbon reduction goal has not been met. As the efficiency measures that the Office of Sustainability takes are no longer as straightforward as installing LED light bulbs, weatherizing facilities, and replacing city vehicles, there needs to be another source of carbon reductions. Renewable energy can provide that, and the city's commitment to 100% renewable energy will be the catalyst for these projects. In June of this year, this body passed Resolution 17104, which endorses a transition to 100% renewable energy for the state of North Carolina and the United States. This resolution has been regarded by many Ashvillians as a commitment to 100% renewable energy, while in fact, no mention is made of energy in Asheville, and it does not establish any energy policy. Per the vision outlined in the 2036 Strategic Operating Plan, the future of Asheville will be powered by, quote, "locally generated clean sources of energy." To realize this vision, our city must first establish the policy that will make it happen. Asheville has been a leader of innovative energy solutions in the Southeast, but our current energy sustainability policy is in need of a shift in focus from exclusively energy efficiency to a more comprehensive solution that includes the production of renewable energy. Thank you for working hard for the citizens of Asheville. We hope to work with you to establish a future in this city with cleaner air, lower utility bills, good-paying jobs in the renewable energy industry, and a strong renewable energy policy that attracts forward-thinking businesses and reflects the will of the special people who call this mountain town home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just, can I just say a quick word on that? Ben has been coming to the SACE meetings and talking to us every month about that, and SACE is committed to looking at the city's existing carbon goal and whether it seems to be updated or changed or anything, and so, this is a part of that.
Excellent. Ben, can you tell us if Sterling, King...
He had, he had, yeah, sorry about that. He would have...
He would have said something similar. Okay, thank you. Then I have Jackson Tierney signed up to speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jackson Tierney. At last month's council meeting, Keith Young said, "We are going about STRs piecemeal." I couldn't agree more. I believe the time has come to reset, including a possible rollback of STRs where they are now legal. The city needs to take more, a comprehensive approach. Most cities our size have a single STR permitting program. In Asheville, for example, there is a completely different permitting program for home stays than for whole-house STRs in, in the CBD, for example. This is not only confusing, but also makes STR accounting difficult. A comprehensive reassessment of our STR rules should include three elements. First, continue the ban on use-by-right of whole-house STRs, and consider a rollback of whole-house STRs in the CBD and the Haywood Corridor. Whole-house STRs where the permit holder are not present invite investor speculation and contribute to hollowing of neighborhoods, even in mixed-use areas. There will be plenty of angst among investors, but Austin, Texas has proved it can be done. In 2015, Austin realized their mistake, stopped issuing new permits, and gave existing permit holders until 2019 to cease operations. Austin still permits home stays, including ADUs. Second, enhance home stays by implementing a parking permit program. This is needed in residential streets adjacent to commercial corridors, especially West Asheville, Monford, and Five Points. Home stays help some Asheville homeowners financially, but the parking challenges they create should not be detrimental to the neighbors. And last, but by far the most important, pursue a formal agreement with Airbnb to get better compliance. Airbnb is expanding their businesses at our expense. The city should start negotiating with Airbnb to provide it with high-quality data for free, instead of us paying a contractor tens of thousands of dollars to guess who is operating illegally. Let's look at a recent success story. Let's look at a recent success story. Airbnb and HomeAway signed a groundbreaking agreement with San Francisco in May to ensure compliance with its stringent STR rules. Airbnb and HomeStay will automatically enter host information into the city's database, allowing it to ensure compliance. Airbnb is now negotiating with Chicago, Denver, and New Orleans on a similar pass-through registration system. Lest we think Airbnb woke up one day and got religion, they didn't. They came to the negotiating table because of a law passed by San Francisco fining Airbnb $1,000 per day for each unregistered listing. Although Airbnb appealed, it looked like they were going to lose.
You can pass that to Maggie, and she'll pass it around. We can read it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackson, can you actually email that to us?
Please.
Great.
Thank you. Hi, I do not have anyone else signed up to speak, but if there's anyone else wishing to speak about something that's not on the agenda, yes, you can do that.
Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, I'm still Peter Landis. I still live downtown. My wife and I made a commitment to Asheville seven years ago when we bought a condo downtown. We rented it out long-term for four years until we could move here four years ago. It'll be three, actually, three years ago come February. In the time we've been here, I've seen the hopes many of us have for a revitalized downtown become increasingly threatened by the seemingly exponential growth of the short-term rental market. As you all know, nearly all the rest of the town of Asheville has no restrictions, has restrictions on STRs, but there are none in the Central Business District because the CBD is zoned commercial. City Planner Shannon Touch, I hope I have the name right, talked to the Asheville Downtown Commission recently, and Ash Vegas quoted her as saying that there's a new phenomenon of residential construction projects, many of them in form of condos, applying for permits to have a certain number of units be short-term rentals. Most short-term rentals downtown have been existing buildings, but that's changing now. Another problem, she said, is that several of the construction projects that have gone through the process of permitting have now come back and looked to, to amend their projects to allow for short-term rentals. There are several projects, at least three I know of, that are below your 21 level for, for council approval just for that very reason, because they want the opportunity to engage in short-term rentals. And I think that that's something that really has to be addressed. You know, I'm not a historian, but I know enough about Asheville's history that in the late 20th century, Julian Price recognized that the way to revitalize downtown was to have a vibrant residential community. He recognized attracting people to live downtown not merely visit was the key to bringing Asheville back from the near dead. Little by little, residents have returned to Asheville's heart. Organizations like Down, like the Downtown Asheville Residential Neighbors have committed money and sweat to try to help downtown, make downtown a real neighborhood. But the increasing presence of STRs poses a growing risk, not only to a desperately anemic housing market, but to the sense of civility that's vital to any common space. It raises the specter of downtown Asheville becoming a hollowed-out center that exists only for those passing through with no commitment to the well-being of this city. There's been an outcry over the increasing number of hotels downtown, but at least there's some monitoring of the behavior of guests, something that doesn't exist when absentee owners rent out their STRs. And I want to point out, obviously, I'm not talking about home stays, where someone who lives in a home rents out for extra income. You know, I see that after four decades, Kim's Whig Center on Haywood is closing, being replaced by something called the Asheville Club. Now, I don't know if Asheville needs another Whig Center, but do we really need another place to drink beer? So long as the growth of Asheville's downtown residential neighborhood is threatened, more and more business will cater primarily to the tourist trade. A healthy urban core needs a balance of retail, other business, and residential properties. Allowing short-term rental market to expand unrestricted, including new condos, threatens that balance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think you and Jackson have demonstrated that we do not have unanimity on this issue.
Sir, would you be willing to give your comments to Maggie? I'd be interested in seeing the rest of it.
Actually, one line. I didn't read past enough.
He's reading one line, and then he's done with this.
What downtown Asheville needs is more housing where people of all income levels can live and work, not a place for gold rush outsiders to cash in and cash out.
I love it.
The gold rush reference was good. That was... Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?